Okay. Okay, that's what I was. Ah. David, CVT is what? CVT is what? Right, uh, it's called the Village Meeting Order. Please write your quote to the ladies of the United States of America and to the Republic. We stand one nation under our eye, indivisible, and every justice for all. Addition, deletion, change just the proposed agenda for this evening. Uh, if there is no objection from council, I'd like to move our agenda around just a bit. Regular agenda, the audit presentation will be as presented. It will go first. I would like to see item, uh, agenda items number seven and eight move to number two after the audit presentation. Reasons being, uh, one, the chairperson of the DDA board is here, Andy Rosé. Andy made special arrangements because he normally has committed to kids, training them in certain activities, and he made arrangements to be here instead this evening. And in addition, the continuing existence and revitalization of the DDA are of great significance to the village. So unless there's objection, that's what I'm recommending that we do. Oka?
President Schneider.
Present.
President Protam Dyke. Councilmember Elek.
Present.
Councilmember Kalka.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Stuffler.
Present.
Thank you. Communications, I don't think we had any. Right, consent agenda, regular meeting minutes for the, our October 4 regular meeting of the village council. One minor on page five of our packet, um, right before the adjournment paragraph. President Schneider said the DDA situation was unfortunate and their meeting, and I think that there we want to be T H E I R.
Correct.
Was their meeting. Anybody else with corrections, question, discussion regarding the minutes from October 4? Fund. Streets, local streets, Parks and Recreation Fund, Downtown Development Authority Fund, Sewer Fund, Water Fund, Equipment Fund. Payroll Register Report.
I could have something real quick on the Equipment Fund.
Equipment, okay.
I think this is on the Equipment Fund, Underground Storage Tank Insurance, the 947. Is this on the underground diesel tank that we're getting removed?
That's the current underground diesel tank that does require insurance on an annual basis, so until I get.
It's gone, that will get prorated?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was hoping.
Yeah. Uh, Payroll Register Report. Water Report. DPW Report. Waters, excuse me, wastewater treatment plants, uh, report for October. Police Report.
Yeah, and the police report, I just wanted to, um, have this conveyed to Chief Martin that I appreciate the, the written summary. Much appreciated. Let him know, thank you.
DPW Report was thorough too. Thank you.
Very thorough.
He actually listens to us. That was nice to know. Okay, uh, Ordinance Enforcement Officer Report. Building Permit Report. Financial Position Report. Entertainer Motion. Is there support or, sorry. Um, motion by President Protam Dyke, supported by Councilmember Glasser, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those favors say aye. 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 Objections? Consent agenda is unanimously approved. Now is the time in our agenda for public comment regarding any of our agenda items for this evening. Is there any public comment?
Is this just for a public?
Pardon?
Sorry, this is the first time I've joined. This is just for me to talk about grievance.
This would be addressing any issue that is on our regular agenda for this evening. Are you on our regular agenda for this evening? There would be public comment time later in the evening. Okay, you're welcome. Anybody else with public comment regarding an agenda item? Mr. Schneider?
Don't have to do that.
I don't have to do that, it just automatically.
Yes.
That's amazing technology, okay. Good evening, everyone. So, um, I've come before you this evening, um, after nearly a two-year period of being absent from, from these meetings, um, to discuss and inform you of the recent issues and drama with the DDA. I want to make some comments on that issue. So, um, as some of you on this board are aware, um, I have had some very public battles with the DDA in the past, uh, both personally and as an elected member of this board. Due to that history, I have avoided, uh, the DDA and its politics and any issues related to it, aside from volunteering to assist with it, um, like anyone would avoid somebody who just contracted leprosy. I'm staying as far away from any of that drama and the politics as I possibly could. But despite the previous unpleasant, um, experiences that I've had, uh, both my wife and I have continued to volunteer our time for the DDA, uh, as we have done since 2015. As many of you know, my family has a strong belief in serving the community, and my wife continued to serve the DDA even after being kicked off that board, uh, continued to volunteer her time for it, which I commend her for. I don't know if I'd have been big enough to do that, I'm a little bit more petty than that, so I don't know if I'd have been able to, but she did. That kind of brings me to, to this year's Heritage Festival and the drama that's taken place since then. My wife, Melissa, who was eight months pregnant, um, at the time, was a volunteer, and my son and I both attended the Heritage Festival. After the festival, there is always typically a follow-up meeting, uh, which is open to the public for them to discuss the issues of the Heritage Festival, what can we do better, what can we improve on. It's typically an amicable meeting about how we progress and grow and do things better. Not so much this year. That meeting took place on September 21st. In the days leading up to the follow-up meeting, uh, then DDA Director Mrs. Shaw, uh, began making it known to several people, almost anyone that would listen, that she had issues with the DDA Chairperson, Andy Rosé. I have personal knowledge of this because, um, as of September 18th, Ms. Shaw began her barrage of calls, texts, emails to my wife, to my office, and to my father, none of which were returned, because we do not want to get involved in the political infighting. But that didn't stop her from continuously barraging. She was emoting continuously about her issues with Andy and other board members. In fact, I'm quoting when she says, "I love my job, but I certainly don't love that board." Fantastic, okay. She was requesting, almost to the point of pestering, uh, that people come to the follow-up meeting, uh, specifically with the intent of attacking Andy. My wife did reluctantly attend that meeting. She went to the follow-up meeting out of respect for the DDA, she had no intent in getting involved in any of the political infighting. When she came home from that meeting, she was visibly dismayed and very upset about the meeting. She explained that the meeting was extremely unprofessional and uncomfortable. She had specific comments about the DDA Board Member Lisa Nistat, who was yelling, screaming, swearing, continuously attacking Andy, yelling "Get him to shut up" during the open meeting. It was incredibly unprofessional and embarrassing. She said that after she would go on these barrages and attacks, Lisa would then turn around to her, because Lisa was seated in the front row, and Melissa was seated in the second row, turn around and go, "Right, Melissa, right?", trying to get her to jump on the bandwagon. And she told me that she would bury her head in her hands out of pure embarrassment in shock that she was being dragged into this. She didn't share those sentiments, nor did she want to share that she didn't share those sentiments, she didn't want to be involved in it. I understand, and I have now read, uh, Lisa Nistat's, uh, letter of resignation, which is blatantly untrue. I don't know if that is just her misunderstanding of those events, or if it is a blatant misrepresentation. Either way, it's untrue. She also said that she was there as a volunteer, not to get involved in the political infighting, and she would have liked to be here tonight to explain this to you herself, um, but she's nine months pregnant, she's not coming. So at that point, we, we kind of thought that this issue would die out, and that it would be over with, and was unfortunate. But she did say that she was so disheartened by the way that everything went, that she was, she was done, this was the straw that broke the camel's back, she's not going to volunteer anymore. And she also relayed to me that several other people made the same comments that evening, they were done, they're not doing this anymore. This is ridiculous. We now know that we've lost additional vendors and bands and other people. I certainly hope, Wayne, we don't lose you, but, um, that would be terrible as well. There was a lot of loss in that situation. In fact, they regularly have to for, uh, form the heritage meeting, what is it, board group, uh, commission, council, committee, whatever way you want to call it, for the following year, and nearly no one would volunteer, because they don't want anything to do with it going forward. The DDA then had its next regularly scheduled meeting on September 28th. Once again, it was clear that Ms. Shaw was attempting to circle the wagons for an attack as she once again constantly texted, called, and emailed my wife, my office, and my father, once again. Again, none of us responded, trying to give a clear indication, we're not getting involved. But this was particularly stressing to my wife, and like I said, at this point, she's nearly nine months pregnant, I was particularly perturbed by it, and I'm taking it personally now. And not to mention, I know that the issues are being misrepresented unfairly, so I decided I would attend the meeting. When I attended the meeting, um, I didn't go to get dragged into the drama, I went to only set the record straight if necessary. So for the first time, again, in the new, nearly two years, I attended a, a public village meeting on September 28th. Oh boy, what a mess. That was incredibly uncomfortable and embarrassing to go to. It was plainly clear that there was a complete breakdown in not only the chain of command of how the DDA is structured, um, there was a lack of any efficient productivity of the DDA, a lack of any professionalism, professionalism, and certainly a lack of just common decency. Several of this board's members were in attendance at that meeting, and they witnessed it as well. So I know that many of you do know what took place and how bad it was. Chairperson Rosé set forth a list of issues that he was trying to address, uh, issues that were particularly concerning Mrs. Shaw, some of which were quite egregious, and I'll get back to that. However, he was consistently interrupted and yelled at by not only Ms. Shaw, but other members of the board during that entire presentation. Given the temperament of the room and what was taking place, I found Mr. Rosé's composure to be quite admirable, because during his presentation, he didn't essentially let his hair down and start attacking other people in an unprofessional way, he presented it in, in a professional manner. Now, while somebody might find the attacks that he was making, um, unpleasant, that didn't make it unprofessional, because these were serious issues that had to be addressed. At a certain point, I couldn't keep quiet anymore, so sitting in the second row right there, uh, I had spoken up and said, you know, "I'm all for conducting these meetings in a professional manner, but this is just ridiculous, and it's not okay, the way that you're handling this." And, um, I was, at that point, then, "Well, don't you think it's unprofessional that somebody would, you know, present these issues in this way?" What I really think is unprofessional, that anyone is going to yell over the chairperson in the middle of speaking. We take turns, this is a civil, public discussion and forum, that's how it's supposed to be. If he has, if you have something to say in response to what he says, let him finish and then respond. But I was continuously confronted with a, "Well, this is just a one-sided story." Exactly, because it's his turn to speak, when he's done, give your side. That's what Michelle continuously kept saying, as well as other board members, "This is only a one-sided version." I understand that, he's still speaking, when he's done, let the other side speak, and then we'll have both sides. Michelle refused to address those issues, "I'm not going to honor it," but you're not going to dignify it with a response, yet you won't let him finish his story and bring up these points, which, given the credibility of what he was presenting, um, and the fact that it was all in writing, email exchanges, I wouldn't want to let him finish either if I was in her shoes, because it was pretty damning. Ms. Shaw, at that point, um, refused to ever address these, and the meeting continued in this fashion for, for almost two hours. It was really uncomfortable, but after that two-hour period, finally, the meeting started to get back on track and move forward, and things started to become a little bit more amicable, and they started discussing ways and procedures that they could prevent things like this from happening in the future, which included ultimately, uh, Mr. Rosé saying, "I can't continue to do it like this, the DDA can't operate like this, um, I am more than willing to resign effective immediately right now and ask for a motion on it." That motion failed. Board would not accept his resignation. Uh, I do believe that the board members didn't really know what to do at that point. We have a lot of newer members of the DDA at that point, who I don't think have a lot of experience in how board procedure works in that situation, or have a thorough understanding of what they should do under DDA Director's contract or their own bylaws, so nothing productive was happening from that point forward as to how we resolve the clear breakdown here. That bit was quite unfortunate. Now, I've watched the October 4 Village Council meeting, um, and I have just a few things I'd like to, to clear up, um, as to professionalism and procedure. Now, I'm looking primarily at you, Tim, because I know that, that you raised a lot of those issues, and you know that I wholeheartedly agree with your sentiments about policy and procedure and professionalism. You know that while I was on this board, I, I helped push for us having those policies and procedures as to how these meetings are conducted. I want all of our village meetings to be conducted in a way that represents this community in a positive manner and with respect, and, um, just, again, a lot more decency towards everybody that's in the room trying to speak on a public issue. The DDA does not have those rules or procedures. They don't, they haven't implemented the same rules and procedures that this board has. And again, this would be an excellent time to bring up the fact that while I was still seated on this board, we were pushing to have every other village board have their meetings live on YouTube so we could watch. That is an issue that we had consistently had while I was on this board, things would take place at the DDA meeting that somehow never made it into the minutes, or people disagreed with what was and wasn't said, which is why it would be great to have an accurate record to reflect that. There's no good answer as to why that still hasn't happened six years later. Call it what you will, but I think that there were more than enough people who were more than happy to not have an accurate record of those meetings, because there wouldn't need to be a lot of questioning, and a lot of people expressing their witness statements about what they viewed, if you could just watch it for yourself. But that still hasn't happened. The comments about the lack of professionalism, um, I think need to be directed at two of the board members who have already resigned, um, because it was their conduct that I found the most unprofessional, in the way that things were handled, the things that were said, the conduct, it was just wildly inappropriate. I can confidently state that as to procedure, it was Ms. Shaw who was clearly attempting to plan a hit job or a setup against Andy. Just the calls that my family, or just the communications, I guess I would broadly state it as, that my family alone received was more than obvious what she was attempting to do. And I know that my family members were certainly not the only ones she was contacting, asking for that support. I think their issue here is that she was just unsuccessful in doing so. But I think when it comes to, to the issues of providing both parties an opportunity to try to resolve this before a public meeting, I mean, I, I heard your comments, and I share that sentiment of, "If you blindsided with me with this at a meeting, you know, I would be extremely upset, and I would be uncomfortable with that." There were multiple attempts at a private meeting, not on the public record, which were unsuccessful, didn't resolve anything, so that was attempted. As far as providing documentation ahead of time, while I agree with you, again, they don't have the exact same policies and procedures, but I think it would be hard for anyone to know what was coming, um, know that you're under attack, know these very significant issues that you have, that you're dealing with, where you can't be productive, and again, the egregious nature of some of these issues, to keep quiet on them and not bring them up, especially when they have board meetings once a month, and they don't regularly have full attendance in their meetings, almost any meeting. So I would find it hard to let that issue sit for a couple more months. And I, I think if you were in those shoes, you'd feel the same, just, I honestly do. Because I'm all for not blindsiding someone, but clearly, it appears both sides were coming there ready to be on the attack. I don't think one, either side was blindsided. Both sides clearly knew they were going to go to war that night. Most egregious in one of the issues was Ms. Shaw's continuous attempts to have one of the DDA Board Members removed. She wanted to know how she was going to have one of the DDA Board Members removed from the board, because she found that Board Member's questioning of how she spends her time, and what her activities are, and what her duties are, um, overreaching, she didn't like that he was inquiring these things, so she wanted him removed from the board, she wanted to know how she could do that. To me, that is just, that is so egregious, I don't think anybody should sit on it even for a minute, it should be brought up at the very next public meeting, whether it's blindsided or not, that's ridiculous. That, that is, to me, uh, malicious behavior, that somebody should be removed for, for cause. That's, it's not my place to, to make that decision, but this is public comment, so I'm, I'm going to make it.
Just a minute. As you know, we did work on policies and procedures, and public comment is supposed to be limited.
About one more sentence, and I'm done, basically, I'm very close to my end, I know, I tried to write it, so I'd be faster, I promise. Just the last thing is, as, as to the organizational structure, uh, Tim, that you were, you were questioning about at the last meeting, um, we, as you know, we went over this extensively while I was still on this board. The president of the village appoints DDA Board Members, DDA Board Members select the DDA Director, the DDA Director, according to the DDA Director's contract and the DDA bylaws, serves at the pleasure of the DDA Board. Village Council has zero authority in this situation.
Right, and I, I clarified that, I got a copy of the thing.
Perfect, and it, the main point I'm trying to make is, there's really nothing that this board could have done to prevent that with the current setup. Maybe you can change something so that you could, but as of now, and the way it has been for the last many years, there's nothing that the, that the village council could have done to rein that in, control it, change anything in that nature of that situation. That's it, just, I don't really think that it really is incumbent upon all of you to have prevented it, and I don't think that you even had the power or authority to do so. That's, that's fine, I'm all set, thank you.
Any other public comment this evening on agenda items? Hey, moving on to our regular agenda, the audit presentation. Thanks for your patience.
No problem, thank you, council. For those who don't know or remember me, my name is Wes Messing, I'm a CPA with King &amp; King CPAs, uh, it's been a few years now that I've been coming to see you, so hopefully you remember me. We came out about a month ago-ish, maybe a couple months ago now, and conducted the annual audit for the village as required by the state of Michigan. Uh, I'll say overall, our audit process went very well, we appreciate the cooperation and support of the staff here at the, the hall, uh, to help answer all of our millions of questions that we have during those couple days, and get us all the information we need to do our job. So you've all been provided the, kind of the blue-bound audit reports, maybe thirty-plus pages, covers your fiscal year-end June 30th, 2022. Uh, I've also left on each of your desks, a couple-page report, uh, that has multiple columns of financial numbers. I'm going to talk about that report rather than the audit report, because this kind of helps facilitate a discussion for our council meetings, uh, helps us see some trend information, and helps us to maybe identify if there's any problems. Uh, I'll do my best to be brief, I know you guys have a big meeting tonight, uh, if you have questions, feel free to interrupt and, and ask. So I'm going to start with the general fund there, the first section on that report. As of June 30th, 2022, the fund balance, uh, was about $1.3 million. Now, you can see over the last five years, that's been steadily increasing. Uh, there was a little dip there in 2019, that was the year that we did the renovation on the hall, uh, and the police department, so that was the reason for the dip there. Uh, but we've been steadily increasing and recovering since then, so that's a good, good thing to see. Uh, I believe for a village of your size, uh, fund balance of 1.3, uh, is, is a sufficient fund balance. I'm not sure that really I could say it's too high or too low, I think it's in a pretty good range for a village your size. Moving down your, your revenue section for the, uh, general fund, property taxes, that's increasing steadily as our tax base continues to increase, uh, we're still seeing recoveries from the real estate crash 10 years ago, and then also with lots of construction, that increases your tax base, and lots of real estate sales also increase your tax base. Uh, the next section, intergovernmental revenues, those are increasing as well, that's your state revenue sharing, uh, so, uh, the sales tax that's collected amongst the state is redistributed into the municipalities, and that's your share of that. So seeing those two items alone, having upward trends is a really good indication for the future of the village, uh, hopefully we have a strong tax base that can, uh, move forward into the future. Charges for service, the next section is, uh, our trash and police revenue for those billings, and that's increasing, so the village is doing a good job of monitoring that, making sure that we are adjusting those rates as necessary, uh, because as you'll see down below in, in the public works expense section, those, uh, those costs, well, public safety and public works, those costs are increasing slightly as well over the same time period, so we need to make sure we're monitoring those to make sure we're covering those costs. Uh, our expenses, uh, fairly consistent, although slightly probably increasing, uh, we're kind of in an inflationary time, costs seem to go up, so that's reasonable for, to see that. Uh, the one thing that maybe looks a little unique for this year is our public works expense, which includes all of the work that was done on Stroop Drain this year, even though the village hasn't paid for that yet, there was about $315,000 of work done on that drain, and so we have to recognize that as an expense, and you'll see down below, there's some loan proceeds of $318,000. So essentially, it's like you were loaned that money, the work was done, and then you're going to make payments on that work over the next, I think, 15 years, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's around that, around that timeframe. So as we make payments on that, we'll kind of recover, repay that loan. Overall, this year in the general fund, we added about $180,000 to our fund balance, good, a good amount, sufficient amount, to set some money aside for the future. Any questions on the general fund? Okay, uh, our major streets fund, we are increasing our fund balance annually over the last five years, our fund balance of 445, 450, uh, the highest it's been in the last five years. years, our fund balance of 445, 450, the highest it's been in the last five years. Again, our intergovernmental revenues, which is your Act 51 revenue, that's increasing over the last five years, which is a good indication for that fund. The DDA fund is the next one. That fund balance is actually decreasing, but still is at 230,000, which is a sufficient number for a DDA fund. DDA isn't really here to hoard money or, or have a huge fund balance, we want to make sure that money's going back into the community. So it's good to actually, in my opinion, see that getting put back into the community. So I don't have any problem there. The next page, our, the next two funds, Water Tower and WWTP, our debt service funds, property taxes are increasing, and we're basically using that money to pay our debts in the water and sewer funds. So things are rolling along well there. Our local streets fund, fund balance has kind of fluctuated a little bit in that fund, it went down in 2020 as we did some street work on Johnson Street, North Street, and Cherry Street in 2020, but we are recovering since then, so that's good to see, setting some money aside for future street projects. Those street projects aren't cheap, so it doesn't take long to use all that up. Last one there, our inspection fund, which is kind of dormant at this point. Next page, the park and recreation fund, we have about a $40,000 fund balance there, has been kind of staying steady or even increasing a little bit if you go back a couple years. So we have a good fund balance there, or sufficient for that activity. Water, oh, sorry, sewer fund is first there. You can see our cash, our working capital, and our net position are all increasing over the last five years, those are good, good indications to see for that fund. Our revenues are also increasing, I know the village is very active in making sure that we're adjusting our utility rates to cover our costs, and here we can see that, that we're setting some money aside in those funds. There, at some point will be replacement of that infrastructure, it'll be helpful for the village to have funds available to do that and reduce how much we have to finance. Very similar with water, although we are a lower cash position in that fund, we are increasing our net position, which is good to see even after depreciation of our infrastructure. Our revenue is also increasing annually in that fund as we adjust our rates. So I don't see any, any issues in either of those two funds at this time. And then I believe our last page has the equipment fund, our net position there, around 400,000, staying pretty stable. We're regularly in that fund buying some new equipment to service the needs of the village. Some of that equipment gets paid for with cash, some of it's getting financed, we're doing good keeping up with the financing in that, in that fund. I believe this year we did take on a little bit more financing than what we paid down, our debt load actually increased, but I don't see that it's unreasonably high, so I don't have any issues there either. So overall, the, the village, I think, is in a pretty good, sound financial position in pretty much every fund, so I don't, I don't really have anything alarming to share with you, but I think that's good news. Again, we appreciate the, the relationship that we've had with the village for a very long time. We have, I think, one year left on our contract, so we'll for sure see you next year, and certainly we'll submit a new contract after that, so appreciate it. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we copy and paste year after year, so it's helpful to do it, once you do it once, you just add one column, that's good, so thank you.
Yeah, as always, breaking it down for us in this fashion is extremely helpful.
I'm glad. We, we found, we get good reviews on that from our, our meetings, so we feel that's a good way to present it, rather than reading thirty pages of very technical accounting knowledge or words that are often lost.
With being an accountant, in their dreams, I love this for reading material, but this really helps us, a quick summation. So it's very helpful, and it's what is done every year, and much appreciated.
Thank you.
So no, no questions from council? So as indicated, we're, we're set, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. As indicated by our quick treasurer, there's gonna be a motion on this, it's to, for council to enter into the record the audited financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022.
I'm making a motion, we enter the correct recorded audited financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022.
Support. Motion made by President Potam Dyke, supported by Councilmember Glasser, sorry, sorry, Councilmember Feldman. Yeah, I must have looked in that direction, sudden came in this theater, it came from over there. Supported by Councilmember Feldman to read the, to enter into the record the audited financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post, the audit is unanimously approved to enter into the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening. So next on our agenda is the reoccurring issue of 7192 General Square.
I thought we were.
Yeah, I should follow my own arrows, thanks.
Thank you.
We should skip this anyway, but in, in any event, so moving, regular attendant, item number seven, that being the resignation of the DDA director. So let's move to that issue. And so, some of what was presented in public comment time, I think, needs to be addressed, and I think there's sort of different perceptions of what should be happening there, but regardless, let's see what page, about eighty-three. So the perception has been, and I'm not sure it's all been an accurate one, that the president appoints DDA board members, the board hires the executive director, and that ends there, that that's the perception of what the structure is, and I think maybe we should be taking a different look at it. So in this situation, the resignation letter submitted by the executive director was presented to the DDA board, and the DDA board accepted that resignation. And so now would be up to council to accept that resignation as well, of the DDA executive So since it's not a board member, we'd be addressing it as a general council matter. Keeping in mind that DDA board did accept that resignation.
So Steve, I'm sorry, are you saying we, as a matter of business, do need to act on this or do not, since it was accepted by DDA?
Well, yeah, this has been, somebody used the word gray matter, and as you indicated, I think in our last council meeting, you recall that council approved of the hiring, shall we say, of the executive director? So that appeared to put it within council's ambit, and I think it's within its ambit and maybe more, but that can be addressed at a somewhat later point, so.
Over reading, over reading the DDA bylaws, it says she serves at, the director serves at the pleasure of the DDA board, it doesn't say, that, that bylaw states no, no inferences to council having any authority over that, that person. It does state, it does state that council can remove a DDA member, but not the DDA director.
Not the mayor contracted employee who serves at the pleasure of a different board.
Exactly.
You guys voted in favor of her, the hiring of the previous DDA director, that was an overstep of your authority, it shouldn't have happened. I think it's just because we wrote it back then, I'm not supposed to be, it shouldn't have happened then.
But it sort of states that they serve at the pleasure of the DDA board, which raises one of my concerns, but I brought up that none of the drama should have happened in the first place if that board would have acted the way they should have acted.
So our village manager want a memorandum before us, DDA's are established by Michigan statute. One that I pulled up, trying to dive into this morass, let's see, it's Michigan compound law, section 125.4204, which indicates that the DDA board adopts rules consistent with the Open Meetings Act and various other statutes governing procedure and the holding of regular meetings, subject to the approval of the governing body, that's us. Secondly, our village manager presented us with, again, DDA law, Public Act 57, 2018, Part II, all the following apply, and, and there's a lot of verbiage in here, what he presented to us, but number 11, actual changes of DDA bylaws, DDA plans, the hiring of the DDA executive director is done by the DDA board, then approved by the, and CBT is city, village, township. So fact of the matter is that I don't agree with the position that we have absolutely no role to play with regard to the executive director, and it turned out that it was, it ended in somewhat of a fiasco, because issues had been brewing for quite some time, and council could do absolutely nothing about it, and it ended up in a situation where the DDA board, which became evident at the September 28th, 2022 meeting of that DDA board, that it was dysfunctional. And so if we take the position that we have absolutely no say-so, no role to play whatsoever, then potentially, without some strenuous effort by our chairperson, Andrew Rosaya, who is here this evening, as well as board members, including Tracy, who's sitting back there, who have stepped up, doing their best to keep the DDA board functional at this point, because it has no executive director, Andy is trying to handle everything right now, and with some board members stepping up, I think we ought to, ought to take a, take a position with this that is much, where we're much more engaged with what's going on at the DDA board, and not only that the, that the council have the role of approving of the executive director's hiring, well, why did we vote on it before, but also giving the council oversight of the DDA, which, which is not for the point of micromanaging, because we can't, we don't, we have too much on our plate as it is, but in rare situation where what just happened, we should be able to play a role. The, the statute also says that the Downtown Development Authority is a subdivision of the governing body, that's us. So if it's a subdivision of our body, we have no role to play, whatever, what happens at the DDA? Doesn't make sense to me, so it just goes off on its own. And for council members who've been here for a while, I guess, our three elder members, sorry, Mindy, you may recall that a previous chairperson took the position that the DDA was autonomous, and didn't have to listen to much of anything that the council had to say or input from us. It got to choose what it, whatever it chose to do, and we had no input, and a battle ensued. And at a later point in time, I think after that chairperson was gone, the former executive director was here at our council meeting and taking the position that essentially they were autonomous. We did not have a right to have any input. I did have to indicate to her, and, and we did bang heads on that occasion, that we were the governing body of the village, we are the elected officials of the village, nobody elected you, Kim, and therefore you are the subservient body politic, as, as the statute says, is a subdivision of village council, and therefore you do not have autonomy to act without any input from council. So what, what I think I'm hearing from the other side of this argument is that, well, if it's gonna be dysfunctional, let it be dysfunctional. We don't have any say-so, we don't have any role to play. I think it's a gigantic mistake, but that's, that's my take on it, and I'm, just one vote.
Well, I mean, to me, Steve, we've, we, I think you're addressing some larger issues that I don't know if it's really something that we need to hash out tonight. I think we've got a couple of things before us that we do need, in my view, need to act on, and that's accepting the resignations that we've received, that's what we've done before, it, you know, there could be future discussion on whether we should or shouldn't be doing that, and by reading of what we've been provided in this document, we should be accepting the resignation, approving that.
And don't read it the same.
This document makes me think this document needs to be updated to reflect this document all but clearly.
Bylaws? I, I, I heard Mr. Feldman say.
Because by interpreting just this, you think there was a.
Well, well, so, so I read it a little bit differently, in the sense that, i-if you follow, hate to use this pun, but if you follow the money, as a village council, we have to approve the budget, and they're supposed to do the budget in our format, we approve it. Once it's approved by line item, that's what they're allowed to use the budget on. So they are kind of autonomous, as long as they follow the approved plan. And I can see why we have to approve the executive director, because once the DDA board says that's the person, we have to approve it, because guess what, they're paid. So back to the money, we.
At the village.
Prove the expense.
By the village.
But if that person resigns, we, they stop spending money, we have no say, they don't spend that money anymore. That's why we don't have to approve the resignation, that's how I read it, because that person's no longer there, they, they're not gonna spend that money, they actually should have funds left in their budget, if they leave midstream. However, the new person that comes in will have to be approved by the village council again, because they're gonna spend money again that is not in the current approved budget. That's just how I read, how they wrote this public act.
I agree with both Tim and you, Pete, in terms of the bylaws do, do need revising, and you and I never disagree anything, Mindy, but I disagree slightly. Here's, here's the reason why, and maybe our, the chairman of the board should be given an opportunity to present something. The way I see the status of the DDA board at this point in time is somewhat existent. The way I see the status of the DDA board at this point in time is somewhat existential. The board was literally coming apart, because Andy is stepping forward and fulfilling the role, I don't know if you're working 24/7, Andy, or not, but of the executive director with the help of the board, several people have stepped forward and trying with some considerable effort in putting themselves out to keep the DDA functioning, because it has the potential to no longer be a functional body. That's how I took this being on the agenda for this evening, because from my, my reading, what, what I see, and I, you know, I sit on that board, it is existential for them, wanting to keep it functioning and revitalize it. And what I've seen from the chairperson and the board members supporting him, it has an opportunity to revitalize and be a better board than it's ever been before.
But what does that have to do with any decision we're making tonight?
Well, for, I, I think, I think that DDA board needs to know that it is supportive of what the DDA board is trying to do at this point in time. And for example, it's considering factor such as hiring an executive director on a full-time basis. Because part of the reason for the functionality of the DDA board not being as complete as it should be is because we don't have a full-time director and what to do with that.
But we're not deciding any of that tonight, that's not.
It's hanging on, it's the resignation.
All we have are the resignations. Right, so I mean, I think we've communicated before, we support the DDA, we support the work they do. It is up to the board how many hours they want to hire someone for. I mean, the budget isn't a factor, but they would need to come to us and say, we need to amend the budget because we want to hire someone for more hours. I mean, this is, I, I just don't know what we're going to spend hours debating about. Like, we have a couple of things we need to make a decision on, and to me, that's it.
I think they just are communicating with us that they approved the resignation letters of these two people, and they're letting us know that that was done.
Yes, and I, I think we just approve it, we move on. I don't know what else we need to talk about.
Well, so for one, we don't, for the other, which is, that's an employee of Mr. Snyder, so we may have something to do with that, right? Because we're going to have to appoint somebody else, or he's going to have to appoint somebody else. So there are two different things here, right?
There's at least two vacancies, as of now.
In the future, I'm talking about what do we need to do tonight, accept the resignation, or if people don't think we need to.
But for my take on it.
Just like we did with Mike Bone.
Who cares if we accepted and if we didn't need to.
Because she's already put it in, and they accepted it.
Yeah, just like Mike Bone last, last time. He, it just was a communication that.
We accept it.
We accepted it, that he gave us a resignation letter and the DDA accepted his resignation.
Are you going to object if we ask Andy Rosia a question? I'd like to ask him why he's here. Why, there's a reason why he broke his personal commitments and showed up at this council meeting tonight, because he is concerned for the continuing existence of the DDA.
I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, I believe Andy should be able to speak, yeah.
Fine, but I don't really, I, I just don't think it's important at this juncture to spend a ton of time debating about procedures and the directions that are non-agenda items, thank you, Stephen. Like, we have to be respectful of everyone's time and our role. But, I mean, I, yes, would like to hear from Andy as well, I just don't know if we need to be in an hour-long philosophical conversation at this point.
I agree with that, at least he could express the reason for him, his, his purpose in being here.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, so first, let me address a, a couple of things real quick. Back to your comment about not being on YouTube, the vote board, our board voted in 2020, June of 2020, to put our meetings on YouTube, okay? That never occurred. After diving into emails and files, working with Kim, our former DDA director has had that since June of 2020. It hasn't been done. A lot of this will be cleared up if we're on video. I tried to get it running for last meeting, but I guess I'm a new YouTube, what do they call them? I don't know what they call them.
You're on probation.
Yeah, so I couldn't do it for 24 hours, so I got locked down. So if not, our last meeting would have been on there. So that is something, I've only been on the board for three years, and that's why I've been pushing on for the day one, we need transparency for that. I've always questioned why that's not there, right? To your question, yeah, really, I mean, you guys really just need to really agree or disagree that we, you know, accepted those resignations. But I think it's opening the door to a lot more questions. I think there's a lot more gray area to this. I think over the years, it's been portrayed in a different way that probably isn't right. And I think we need to get to the bottom of that as a collective, right? I mean, I'm just going to throw this out there, let's say you're saying, hey, we don't have anything to do with the DDA director, right? But let's say you guys learn that DDA director's embezzling money, but the board, DDA board wants nothing to do with it. They're just going to sit on their hands and just let it go. You're just going to let them embezzle taxpayer money? No.
No, at that point, we would be able to say that you violated your approved budget and take action.
You could, you could, but by what, by what timeframe? So, and, and how do you go about it? I think we need to wrap our hands around more of the ins and outs of it. I've got calls into, actually David's working with the MML, I've had other calls out there, how do you post this job? Because a big question comes up, and how do we have the DDA director job posted, right? There's, there's, are they a direct employee or are they a contract employee? No offense, we use your guys' tax ID number. You know, we don't have an HR department, right? You guys do the payroll, you do the taxes, the work bits comp. If we go full-time, we got to offer that person benefits through the village. To me, they're a village employee on contract office, if I look at it from the business side. But we have to get a better handle on that, and that's what the new board, or the board going forward is going to do. So I'm just here to kind of talk through that and reassure everybody here that, you know, it's a new, it's a new look, it's a new face, it's a new, new methodology going forward, and we're here to be a partner to the village, whatever that takes.
To Andy, Andy's point about our ability to take action. So, okay, embezzlement, yes, by the act. However, there was illegal conduct on the part of the former executive director, she's former, to remove a board member, because she also wanted to remove Andy. And that's illegitimate. She does not, in order to remove a board member, that board member is to be presented with written charges, to be presented to council in a public hearing, to essentially have a trial for that board member in order to be removed, not the executive director, say, I can kick you off. And she made at least two efforts to remove this particular board member who very conscientiously serves and does a good job, good community member. If we don't have any authority, it's, it's not a criminal act, but she was acting in a manner that was not legitimate.
But according to your by, their bylaws, you, we would have the, because a board member is appointed by yourself.
Board member, but she, he's saying the executive director was doing that.
Yes.
How did it come in back here?
Right.
Well, but, and then that's, that's wrong.
At this point, early meetings are done, written as done, so when you mention of any action of the former, former director at this point, does not need to be brought up in this meeting. I have concerns about the way it went down, I don't want to rehash the he said, she said about your memo or her resignation letter. It all raised red flags. Stephen, to your point, if everything was, if, I was going to ask a thousand questions of history about this, like, you guys approved her contract less than a month ago, a month later, it's a disaster and she should be gone. I guess my concern going forward is two things. One, anybody's opinion of her, she served the village for six years, and our former clerk that was later charged with crimes left on a better note and with more class than Kim looked. And if it was that bad, the board had the, the board had the ability to A, have private meetings with her, demand a private meeting with her, and spell out the concerns and give her a timeline to improve, which is any corporate way to do it, or to remove her from her position, because you guys have that ability. Instead of taking it in front of a public meeting, dropping a nine-page memo in front of everybody five minutes before the meeting, and then hashing it out publicly. That, those kind of actions, actions that I've mentioned at the last meeting that concern me. So going, so that was in the past. So in the future, we need to have specified processes, how you guys are going to act and manage a newly directed, directed, a newly hired director, so this kind of farce doesn't happen in the future. And it's, and it was a farce on both sides, because if everything in your memo and what Stephen is saying is true, why, why was there still employment up to that meeting? Why, and why, and why was, why was not a motion of resignation brought at that meeting if it was that bad? Instead of dropping, dropping bombs.
So to that point, I can't bring that motion of resignation, right? I can't, I offered to resign. I would have you go to how OMA on closed meetings work, to have you get a little bit more knowledge on how I had to handle it. Did I want to have to handle it that way? No, but sadly, that's the way it has to be done. I did, if you did get the email sent around, I did attempt to try to have a private meeting with Michelle to kind of address these, and she refused to meet with me. So my next layer of escalation, sadly, is to do that at an open meeting. We are an open public body, and that's the way it has to be done. Now, yeah, yeah, and, and guess what? I, I contacted legal counsel to make sure this all went down correctly. I don't, I don't do anything while I'm checking my facts, I can tell you that 100%. So to that point, okay, as painful as it was, what everybody is missing is what has come out of those documents and what has been occurring, right? There's been some grievous issues, and thankfully, it's now behind us and we're going to move forward. But everybody wants to focus on how the message was, not what's in the message, okay?
I'm not focused on what the message was, I'm focused on making sure processes are followed, so there's.
Perfect, recite to me the HR line in your village policy that tells me how to handle that.
Your board, your board, your bylaws has the ability to, she, she serves at the.
The pleasure of the board.
She serves at the pleasure of the board.
I, and she reports directly to the chair, so that she would not respond to the chair in meeting, so I had to bring it up at a meeting. So for Open Meetings Act, what are we going to do, call a meeting with all the board members to go over it in private? I can't, it has to be done in public, sadly.
So after, so what you're saying is, you're the chair, she reports to you, in a, in an open meeting, you cannot cite the facts and then say, I want to bring a motion to terminate.
I can't bring motions, I'm the chair, somebody else has to. Nobody was willing to do that. And I said, unfortunately, I can't work with this, not just from the fact of what she was doing, but the personal attacks and, as a statement occurred, running around and doing all this behind my back, you know, I've got a business to run in town, I got family in town, I'm not letting somebody tear me apart for somebody's $25,000 job, please. I don't, sorry, I'm here to help, but I'm not doing that. And it was done professionally, whether you like it or not, it was done correctly. I had to do it that way. So now to that point, going forward, do we adopt different bylaws or different rules? Sure, I would, but we don't have them. So if there's no rule, other than me using OMA, I used OMA. If you can't quote to me an HR rule that tells me I was supposed to follow it a different way, I did what I had to do, as unpleasant as it was.
Distant board members?
Yes. I've, I've, I've had, I've had conversations. So with that said, how can we be assured going, according to your memo and your, your letters that we've gotten this week stating that, stating that the special meeting went well, and going forward, do you guys want to start moving forward in a positive fashion? How, how can you assure those other members that they're going to be respected, included, and?
Everybody's included, I mean, they're all, they're all volunteers, we're all volunteering together, right? I, I do take issue when I have somebody running around talking mad about everybody on the board, which happened for the whole nine months I was chair, right? Pick the time, pick the issue, right? New week, new problem, right? But the, the current board members, I'm not sure who you spoke to, but I would say everybody but one has told me that they can't, they're excited about the change and looking forward to moving forward.
Chopping black, so to speak. And a couple of people came forward at that special meeting and basically stated that they believed that the DDA was, become out of existence, it was just going to dissolve. I, I took a rather firm position at that point, that I was much more optimistic about the continuing existence of the DDA board and the chance for it to be revitalized. And what I have seen, I'm surprised that board members have indicated that, that they are somehow going to be excluded from participating. Almost everybody has, in fact, stepped forward and offered help. It was Holly, or Tracy, or Christie, or Earl, or the, the brand new board member, Krista Booth, I think, how you pronounce her name. They've all stepped forward, and it's very encouraging, everybody seems to be doing the right thing. The atmosphere and attitude that I'm seeing from the board is like, you people are great.
No, that, that's reassuring, and I bring, I only bring it up because it was brought to me.
Sure.
And it was within the last three or four days, so.
And I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that, but I, I, I think everybody is committed, as we all should be, or elected, or the people are appointed, to do the right thing. We have to do the right thing, for the benefit of the village.
To Mindy's point, I don't want to belabor this all.
Yeah.
But I, but I did want to bring concerns about, there, there's got to be better protocol going forward, and that's rewriting the bylaws, the true writing of bylaws, but.
On top of rewriting their bylaws, we need to figure out on council's side where we stand to support their bylaws, so there is, like Andy's saying, some kind of, when he needs the backup, we need to be able to back him up. Or say, sorry, it's on your guys' hands, we don't have no control.
Well, and to that point, if, if it comes out that, that director is a village employee contracted us, jury child policies that dictates reviews and how to handle grievances and how to handle all that. So the reason why I'm spending all this extra time trying to get through this, it's not because it's been done that way in the past, it's because we need to get a good concrete answer going forward, so this doesn't happen again, not just with us, but with everything.
Agree on that, because it, it's highly concerned, it, it was highly concerning, and you can see from our perspective, that I, we, we get two resignation letters to people that have served diligently, everybody has their own opinion. You get two resignation letters, a month before, they got a raise and a, and a good review. And then a month later, it's like, and, and then the way the meeting went down, yeah, we need to seriously look at the policies from both the village and the, and the DDA bylaws and revise them, because reading those, there's a lot of missed, there's a lot of.
So to that point, I can't speak for the board. I mean, I know my background and how I do things, it's going to be to the letter of law, and it's going to be concise, right? Sometimes it's not going to be pleasant, but, but to that point, there's some. Sometimes it's not going to be pleasant, but, but to that point, there's some that like, don't like to stir the pot, are worried about looking bad. Obviously, here I am standing in front of you, airing it all out there, you know? Sadly, a couple have turned me bad in this whole community and I've heard that, right? So, and the business owners have reached out to me downtown and said, hey, I know you're the one taking heat on this, but thank you for making these changes. And I'm like, it wasn't just me, you know? So we have a whole board to thank, but still, I mean, yes, there's a lot we have to do to move forward. You know, to that point, let me just throw this out there. What, to handle issues, what do you guys do to document past issues? Do you, do you have an HR folder to go over issues?
Personnel folder.
You do. Is there a personnel folder for the DDA director? Who keeps that?
It's in my office.
You keep it. Why do you keep it and not the DDA? Right? So to that point, as I'm going through now, I've accessed the emails. She deleted at least 604 emails in the days I could see because we can only go back so far. I get an email for 2017 where she was running around calling the village staff, Chief Andy Liers, and there was a complaint filed by a village person, right? So, yeah, it's your email. So there's a history of problems. I mean, sorry, I mean, professional, you don't run around calling a bunch of people a bunch of liars. This doesn't happen. There's issues, handle it in private if you have to. In that regard, that's not an open meetings deal. But I don't know what that was over, some vouchers or something, but Ms. Coronado complained that Kim was running around calling the office staff and Chief Andy a bunch of liars. Ironically, I was called a liar and resignation letter and six times and somebody else's and a dictator. And I guess I hate pregnant ladies too. Sorry.
I, I remember that. I was, I was part of that. The first time I got sucked into Mike him to go to her events, I got a year full pursuit, Coronado on that issue.
Right. So, so to that point, right, this, this, I understand it looks like this has all been occurring within a short period of time. Let me assure you, this has been going on longer than that. And there's more, if you want to talk about it, I, I've got plenty to talk about, but I don't know if you want to, how deep you want to go, but
Andy, can you just explain that there was conversation about how we prevent stuff like this from happening in the future and how we're more productive about that, making amendments to the new contract for the new DDA director about performance goals, being very specific about them, when they do it, when they do performance evaluations, when they're structured, removing everything around so it's more cohesive, more efficient, making it much more clear. And that was at the time that Michelle was still expected to stay. It was meant to apply to her
Correct.
Also in the future DDA director.
And at, and at the time I said, we owe that to that person, right? We owe that to them to have something concise. And you use an acronym for it, Pete, what was your acronym?
SMART, SMART goals.
Right. So we need that. So to that point, again, I'm used to corporate. Government's a whole another bag of warms really, right? But I think we can kind of cross that gap and get some better structure for us or all around. I think, I think every meeting going on, including the park board meeting should be televised. They're not. So there's a lot that can be done, not just on our side, but as a community. So.
You aired your concerns. I, I think they were important. They're valuable. Um, and what, anything that you have to say at council, quite frankly, uh, is usually quite substantial and needs to be listened to.
So to that point, let me just throw this out there. At that special meeting, we had a member of the public making serious accusations against Stephen, myself colluding to do this to, to bury a lawsuit and all this other stuff. And then, you know, dissolve the DDA and Kim's running around telling everybody, well, if I lose my job, there can be no DDA. I mean, I, again, I would tell everybody to look at, uh, Act 57 218, Section 230. It talks about dissolution and reinstatement. It can be done. I mean, but again, at the time, somebody made a quote, well, that's what's going around. Well, COVID's going around too, but
Restatement is specifically stated in the statute.
It's, it's, there's a law to it.
Yeah.
So again, we need to wrap our hands around, well, not the gray area. What's black, what's white and move with it.
So, so, and we can't resolve all those issues, but at least this council got to hear you and your concerns and what's going on and, uh, whatever reservations that were about dragging this out, at least get an opportunity to get a feel for what the chairperson is like and what's been going on inside the DDA. And essentially, I think it's revitalization. So anybody else have anything that they want to address to Andy?
I agree with like what Tim said too, though. I think even for us, when we did our reviews, I think both council and the DDA need to look at everything as far as how do we do proper reviews? And we need to grow from that because we just aren't doing it right. And that's a shame on both boards that we just, we need to grow better. And again, we talk about it, but we still obviously aren't doing it yet.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. And as I mentioned before, there was the old school way of doing things that just kind of carried on in the present day and things have evolved. The way you evaluate, the way you test, the way you look at, um, at board members or employees, whatever it might be. And yeah. So, um, and I think all these things can be developed, but I don't believe there's anything further we can do this evening. Anything else that you wish to, to say, Andy?
Um, no, I mean, uh, I think at the time at the meeting, you asked me to talk about kind of the issues that occurred moving forward. Um, there was some contract negotiation. If you want me to touch on that, if not, then I'm good.
Yeah, I don't think we need to address this this evening either. Um, as council members have been indicating, it supposedly had fairly narrow issues before us, but I think it was valuable for council, at least here, what you have been going through and what the DDA board has been going through. So, so thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. I, I think council, um, is satisfied that the resignation of the DDA director does not need to be addressed by us because the DDA
I think we accept the resignation.
Yeah.
We accept it, but we don't have to vote on it or make a motion.
I think we make, we have to make a motion that we accept. I will make the motion that we will accept Michelle's resignation as the DDA executive director.
Support there.
A motion by Councilmember Staffler, supported by Councilmember, uh, Kunkka to accept the resignation of the former executive director of the DDA. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objections?
What about the other resignation?
Just getting to that. Now that is a slightly different story. Um, from the standpoint that, and this happened with, um, Mike Bohm's resignation. Since I appoint, I accept the resignation of Lisa Nistat. Um, I mispronounced her name. Sorry. And request council ratification. That's what we did with Mike Bohm. And that's protocol because of the fact that I actually appoint, um, those DDA board members. So, um, with regard to was agenda item number eight, the resignation of the DDA board member, Lisa, just use her first names. I don't want to misspronounce her last name. Um, I accept a resignation and request council ratification.
I'll make the motion that we ratify your
Acceptance.
Acceptance.
Yeah.
Of the resignation of Ms. Nistat.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Staffler, uh, supported by Councilmember Alec to ratify, um, uh, the president's acceptance of the resignation of Lisa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Now we go to our next exciting agenda item, 7192 general square, um, invoice. And this has been dragging on apparently for a couple of years. Um, council can make a decision on this. I am recommending, uh, that we not address it this evening. According, I presume all of you got my email because a, uh, Mr. Stanley dropped a letter off at my office yesterday, um, uh, saying that he had understood he was going to be coming for council to meet at the October 4 meeting. Uh, it didn't because, I think because our, um, DPW supervisor was, couldn't attend and needed to be here in order to adequately look at the issue. Um, uh, so it was put over to this meeting and Mr. Stanley couldn't make this meeting. I think he's over, over the road, uh, truck driver. So I, I, it, my, my position is if we're deciding this issue that has, uh, has obviously a lot put into it because it's, it is only what, 22 pages of our packet and Mr. Stanley not being here, it just doesn't quite seem fair that we decide the issue without his presence.
Mr. Snyder, just, just
It's up to council.
Just so the board knows, I cannot be at the next two meetings as well. So if you have any questions, if you do decide to put it off, I can answer any questions for you tonight. I apologize. I was not here, able to be here on the fourth.
That, that, that happens. Um, uh, Kim, do you see any issues village wise if this was put over to let's say the third meeting from this evening? Is there, as, as far as
The first meeting in December, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, when we're Brian Kennetan and then we'll check with Mr. Stanley and make sure he can be here. So he, that he is here and present for this thing that's been going on for a couple of years. And that's not to indicate, um, an inclination one, one way or the other as far as what decision should be made. I just think that if you're going to have a hearing on this, that both parties should be able to be present. Just want to be fair.
That would be a council decision. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Um, yeah, I'm just making a recommendation and it's up to council if you want to go ahead without them.
I would like both parties here.
Seems just like a fair thing to do. All right. Um, so maybe plan in first meeting in December and we'll check with Mr. Stanley, see if he can be present. And Brian, you'll be back in December?
Yeah.
You bringing Florida with you or wherever you go?
No. I'm, it's
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Hunting season.
All right. So there, we have a consensus from council that we not address, uh, is on our agenda as, uh, agenda item number two, not this evening. Okay. All right. Okay. Um, regular agenda item number three, there's sewer relining. Um, and and this is, uh, yours, manager Trent, right? Page 63.
Yes, good evening. I moved my papers too far. I had to find page 63. So as part of the, uh, issue that we would like to address with you folks tonight, uh, you'll recall during our budget process, uh, we outlined several CIP projects that we desire to have built into the budget this year. Sewer relining was one of those. Uh, we've talked about this topic on a number of occasions because of the INI issues impacting our wastewater treatment plant. And so, uh, uh, we were able to obtain the quotes of two firms, uh, Corby Engineering Services, who we have used in the past for, uh, relining of our sewer lines. And, uh, and to obtain a, an additional bid, uh, we discovered the firm Inliner, which has been in business for a number of years, uh, as an additional vendor for this service. And they are the preferred vendor for the cities of LaPire and Bay City. And those communities have substantial dollars allocated for sewer relining projects on an annual basis where Inliner is contracted as a preferred vendor for those communities and, uh, and has a contract on an as needed basis for three to five years at a time. Um, included in your packet is the updated quote from Inliner for relining the sewer lines of Brand Street, the large 15-inch main interceptor along the Farnham Drain and Clinton River, and the newly identified area of concern along East St. Clair. Prior quotes from Corby Engineering Services, CES, did not include East St. Clair and they have not responded with an updated quote. For reference purposes only, we included their original quote in just as a reference for you to see what their pricing was. Based on the overall lower price from Inliner, strong references from other communities that utilize our service and engineering expertise in developing our proposed work plan, uh, we recommend contracting with Inliner for the quoted project. And, uh, in your, uh, packet is the proposal from Inliner in the amount of $232,545 for relining the designated sewer lines per their proposal.
So I understand the numbers and I'm sure you expected me to ask questions on the numbers. Um, the 228, 995 and quick math on the CES 268, 924, those aren't apples to apples. The, the lower one actually includes more line drain. That includes East St. Clair, correct?
Uh, yes. It's not apples to apples.
Yeah, it's not apples to apples.
So, so the lower one actually includes more work to be done than the previous quote, which is more expensive.
Let's say that's the one that quotes the work we want done. Cause the other, the other quote, uh, did not, he, he missed a huge chunk of East St. Clair. So he didn't even quote it. I don't know how I met with him on site and, but it did not make the, the cut, I guess.
So the proper quote is the 232,000?
The Inliner one, yes. And it is a newer, it is a newer company. We haven't used them in the past, but they are doing work in LaPire and Bay City and they've shared a, uh, maintenance contract with us that I want to try to move forward with in the future so that we can, you know, maybe come to you guys every three years instead of every year. Um, just keep in mind, this is the most money we've ever spent. I really think it's going to benefit the community. I really, this is where we should have started 30 or 40 years ago as far as infiltration. Okay? Um, our interns worked on this, um, putting these quotes together and these, they did research on these areas and these areas are along the river and along the Farnham Drain. So.
Speaking of your apples, apples to apples, there is apples to apples. If you look at the quote for the, an Inliner, the 15 inches bid out at $52 a foot. And if you look at the other quote, he's bidding it out at $83 a foot.
Right.
I mean, 15 inches, 15 inch. I mean,
Yeah.
We can do the math the rest of the way.
Right. Yeah.
Where's the identified portion on St. Clair at?
The, I'm sorry.
The identified portion of St. Clair that would be relined is where?
So that's from west, this West St. Clair Bridge or Tube all the way down to the Cherry Street Bridge. Okay. So that's basically the Farnham Drain. Okay. I, I can't guarantee this is going to fix anything, but I can guarantee you that every time the drain fills, we take on infiltration. And I, I, this is, this is where somebody should have started before all of us were here, you know, 30, 40 years ago. So that, that thing, we do know when we get a large storm, drains and the river flow lifts up and the sewers along that are just taking on everything. So.
Timing standpoint, the original quote that we got from Corby was in the early spring that included Juliet. And as we moved forward and we had the summer interns come on, and you'll remember it was the Memorial Day weekend when we had the three inches of rain in a couple hours and had that, had that magnitude and had the pleasure of Lindsay helping us identify
Yeah.
Areas of concern throughout the, uh, throughout the, uh, the system. And as, uh, Councilmember Alec has pointed out, in, in their quote, when you looked at some areas there where there were some apples to apples, it's obvious that, uh, Inliner has the lower cost per foot, uh, for doing some of the service. So we asked both companies because of some, uh, basically because we didn't want Juliet in the mix because Inliner did not quote, uh, that. And there was, uh, some confusion about the, the size and we wanted to make sure that everybody was quoting apples to apples. And so we asked Corby to come back and here's a spreadsheet, here's the sizes, here's what we want we want you to quote, and they didn't update their quote to reflect what we wanted tonight. But based on, you know, some simple math, we, we figured that they were probably going to be $30,000 to $50,000 higher.
Well, that's, we need to get on their schedule. I was just getting ready to give you guys that speech. You know, it's with anything, there's a lot of communities out there, they got more ARPA money than we did, so therefore these contractors are tied up. You know, they're, they went to the ones that are throwing out $800 million. But he did say he is due to go into Lapeer before July, I thought, and that's when the company would probably fit us in the, his exact words on the phone when we talked to him was, well, when do you want it done? But I want it done yesterday, you know, so that doesn't work for him.
You work rains a lot.
Yes, yes.
Isn't this his start dates in this, on this relining for the project? I mean, the 529?
No, no, those are manhole numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But yeah, bypass pumping has to be set up along the interceptors because the flow is so heavy, you can't just stop the flow on those, those big sewers. So Branch Street is a smaller sewer, which we're planning on redoing the service lines, the sewer, and then eventually the street. That sewer is in pretty bad, that's the worst sewer as far as cracks and breaks and stuff like that, that go. So I want to get that lined before, and then of course, we lined everything from Maple all the way to the south to West St. Clair. So I'd like to finish that off and, you know.
With what, you know, with what we're tracking now, when we have, you know, X amount of rainfall and see the resultant impact on infiltration and how much our wastewater treatment plant is treating, you know, we've, we've got some good numbers to know how those correlate now. And, and we really feel that if we have your approval tonight, at least now we've got a contractor identified, we've got the money budgeted, and let's get them queued up as soon as their work schedule allows them to come in and help perform the work. And we'll be able to monitor, you know, the level of improvement we see in the reduction of INI.
Motion made by President Tim Dyke, and that was you right when the, so everybody comes from Glasser. Right. For their sewer relining proposal with, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved. Regular agenda, item number four, sanitary and stormwater easement. And this is a recording of an easement, is that correct? Kim?
Correct.
Yeah. And what you're asking for us to do is essentially enter it into the recording into the, recording of the easement into the record?
Correct.
Okay. Issues? Is that something we've been seeking for?
Yeah, going for, well, this is at Southeast Heatmore.
Aye.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was part of the site plan review of their outdoor storage. That was one of the requirements of the site plan.
I'll make a motion to enter into the record the recorded easement for sanitary and stormwater easement on parcel ID number 44-041-475-017-00 and number 44-041-527-040-00.
Support.
Thanks for reading that, Jack. No one else wanted to do it.
I, we have to deal with those parcel numbers all the time and parcel work drives you nuts. Who was the support by, supported by Councilmember Feldman to enter the recorded easement into the record as stated on the record by Councilmember Colka? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, unanimously approved. Resolution for EO 2022-8 reimbursement. Kim, is that your presentation?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes, as part of emergency, EO stands for emergency order, I apologize. 2022-8 from the state regarding the GLWA 120-inch water main break. Brian and I went to a meeting in Lapeer of all the affected counties in Lapeer County, and we met with the state representative to ask for this reimbursement. So we're not going to get 100% of our reimbursement, but it still warrants us to at least request, recoup some of our costs from that. For example, any of the regular time that was used on this emergency will not be reimbursed. Overtime, supplies, sample testing, that sort of stuff could be. But in order to do that, council has to adopt, adopt the attached resolution. They wanted it yesterday, but they did agree to extend it until Friday. And then we meet one-on-one with the state to go over the application to make sure everything is in order, basically kind of preapproving that application before it gets sent to the state for reimbursement.
So the, the resolution reads, just clear in my mind, that we are requesting a grant of 250,000. That's the way the resolution has to read, but, and then you present proofs as to what your actual loss is later.
Right, the 250,000 is the maximum that our side's municipality can request. Obviously, we're not going to come anywhere close to that amount. But when I asked the state for guidance on how to write up the resolution, they said to put that 250,000 in the resolution.
Maybe if we put 7192 General Squire on there, they'll equal 250,000. It's possible. Yeah, I, I have reviewed the resolution as to its legal viability. Anybody have any issues with the resolution titled State Disaster Continency Fund Grant? Resolution 22 hyphen 10 hyphen 01. Anybody have any issues with it? Motion?
Well, oh, okay, in the motion, or in the resolution, it designates me as the-
Oh, yes.
Authorized agent. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Right, that is the furthermore paragraph.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, if you don't want Kim to be the author, just don't vote for it, but.
By all means, you can assign someone else.
I think she's proved we can trust her.
So I'll make a motion for, to adopt the resolution number 22-10-01, State Disaster Continency Fund Grant Resolution, and assign Clerk Treasurer Kim Kiesler as the authorized agent.
Support. Okay, a motion by Councilmember Colka, supported by Councilmember Alec, to approve resolution 22 hyphen 10 hyphen 01, State Disaster Continency Fund Grant. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Stuffler?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Colka?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Feldman?
Aye.
Glasser?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye. Resolution, emergency order, is unanimously approved. Okay, moving on to regular agenda, item number six, water service replacement.
So, this is a passion of mine here because obviously Eagle came out with a mandate that Kim doesn't agree with, that's why. But our number one repairs are usually old galvanized service lines and stuff like that. I've met with numerous contractors since March or May, or I, I can't even begin to describe, I, I can't get anybody to quote this work. I do have some quotes from a year ago. I didn't want to bring them before you because they were outdated and some of them require us to do the work. Jim, you did witness us redoing a service line. One of the contractors that we hired, we did the excavating and they brought in the drill. And one of them before me, it's the same price to just hire a different company to do everything. So if you look at Mr. Stanlick's bill, it was $3,000 for us to just do a repair. These are full replacements, okay? I can't do a full replacement. We, we are trained and, and ready to do repairs. So I'm basically coming before you to, to start working on Branch Street and Johnson Street and in the northwest of, northwest area of town to get some of these, these lines replaced. Some of them, we are in the middle of doing an inventory and I update the inventory to Eagle every couple of months. I guess the best example is we started this in 2019 because that's when the mandate came out. I, I mean, the best example is, is Lapeer and Emily have lead showing up in their water. We do not. So whatever we're doing, we're doing right. It's just I can't get it done. I get one or two done a year, you know, and plus all the other stuff that we do. So like I said, it's, you know, a goal of mine to get all this old material out of the ground or to comply with Eagle's mandate. A year ago, these were $1,000 cheaper, right? You know, the longer we wait, the material goes up. Again, Waldorf, we have used him in the past for emergency repairs and, and they basically got it down to a science as far as replacing it from the main all the way into the house. The only thing we have to do is restoration. Well, what it is, is because each, if you look at this, each house is different depending on the length, we couldn't go address by address by address and measure the feet and everything because you never know what's going to happen when you get, get into the ground, you know? Once you get in the ground, you could run into a sewer and then you have to reroute it or something like that. So what they kind of quoted was long side, short side. So what my plan is, is I want to start on Branch Street because that road is destroyed, you know, with open cutting and some of the repairs that we've done in the past. I want to start there and just work my way up Branch Street. Cherry Street was redone when they put the water main in in the 80s. And then I want to work to, to Johnson Street, which the repair to the asphalt will be minimal because they're using the drilling method. And I want to go until my $50,000 that we budgeted is exhausted. And then I will be coming again to you in July and asking for another $50,000. The mandate is supposed to be completed by my retirement date, so that's, I, I just, it's very, it's something I'm very passionate about. I want to do it. And, and everybody, Jim, the water pressure, I mean, can you maybe stick up? I mean, it was night and day.
I'm there, yeah, it's night and day. I mean, we, we did the one on mine, I was doing some construction in the driveway and the line, the old disconnect was busted off in the ground. And while I had the driveway tore up, I, Brian come down, he's like, well, yours is one that's still got lead on it, we got to get it done anyways.
Yeah, and he-
And it took it from, I'll bet you, three gallons a minute to nine or 10.
And he, he did have a, a, a level of lead showing up in his water a few years ago because I used him as a lead and copper site. It wasn't an action level of lead. And since, you know, I re, redid his site because, you know, me, I'm questioning the state. But I wanted to know the difference.
And then we tested again.
Well, yeah, and then of course DHS came into town when everything was happening. And I have not heard anything from, but these other communities have. So whatever we're doing, we're doing right. And I would just like to continue to move forward with that. It's mainly, I think I got it narrowed down to the northwest quadrant, and then East St. Clair, we have to investigate yet. But we're planning on trying to just redo the water main, and when that happens, we'll do all the service lines as well. So, but, you know, with all the stuff that we have to do, it's just hard for me, I can do one a day and then something else will come up during the day and I won't, you know. So, but they're a very good contractor. They did most of the work for the city of Flint. They did all, most of the replacements there. And like I said, we have to do very minimal, you know, maybe go behind them and restore the grass or something. They go into the house because they have to go into the house to take the line in there and we're not that good with that. We've done a couple, actually, you know, you finished yours off, but, you know, we're not plumbers, so we don't know really what's going on inside of a house, so.
When would they be able to start?
I got to get, this is another thing, I got to get on their schedule. They're scheduled to do some in Lapeer as well. But again, we're probably not the highest priority because they have action levels of lead in their pipes, you know, which I don't ever want to, you know, we never lost pressure during that break. If we'd have lost pressure, there could have been a chance of us showing action levels into, in, in the, in the pipes. So I know Kim and I attended that meeting, I tracked, we tracked every hour, every piece of equipment. We came up with $13,000 and we'll probably get $1,000 back, so in my eyes, we're getting punished for doing such a good job, you know, but.
Well, and the state even said that when they contacted me after testing water after the break, they're like, wherever you guys have done as a council for your DPW, it's worked. These guys, I mean, the state was praising them.
And we-
Because of, he was three steps ahead of where the state wanted him to be when they asked. He was already past that point, so. What, what streets did you want to start on?
I want to start on Branch and work my way to Johnson. I'm hoping Johnson will get finished. There's approximately 18 houses altogether. I don't know if 50,000 is going to do them all. You know, there's going to be my guys running around helping these contractors, you know? That's why people see more than three guys in one area because we usually help our contractors, which keep the cost down. So, you know, if we have to do a water tap, we can jump in a hole and do a water tap for them real quick or sometimes things break and, you know, but I'm going to put some guys with them to, you know, kind of work right along with them and, but the materials, you know, it's, they're using copper, which is all traceable through locators and stuff for the future. But all this copper and brass, it's all gone up $1,000 bucks. A year ago, that top line item was 2,100 bucks, now it's 3,100. And it's, it's a material thing. So, and I, I actually have a good supply of materials that I would like to supply to them to try to keep some of the cost down. But the main thing is to get in their books, if that makes any sense, so.
I am fully in support of what you're doing here, Brian. I think it's one of our top priorities is to provide clean, safe drinking water to our citizens. So I really appreciate those efforts.
Well, and, and on top of, I mean, everybody has heard it, everybody complains about how high the water bills are. I mean, when they see, you know, everything getting upgraded, it takes the bite out of it a little bit.
Well, and the improvement in pressure, I'm sure.
Yeah.
It's huge.
You use more to get the bill higher.
Start enforcing those five-minute showers.
I had to go buy new faucets and put the restrictors back in.
Well, the, the water main we replaced on Elmont Avenue, I know it knocked our fund right down, but, you know, for the last two winters, we have not been out there. Some of the guys are like, man, I kind of wish we would have just left that in there. No, you don't because that's not where I want to spend the rest of my career. We've been fixing that water main since I've started, you know? So once we replaced it, you know, we can start working on other areas. But you're absolutely right, Jim, the people need to see what we're doing out there. So, and we do have a lot of old houses in that northwest quadrant, and of course, East St. Clair, I'm not forgetting about you, but.
Just the, the invoice presented by Waldorf is essentially open-ended. I mean, we could, I suppose, total up what they've, what they've indicated in the invoice, but it's still kind of open-ended.
So you don't know which, you don't know how many $3,100 jobs you're doing until you get into it. That's, and, and I tried to write down each address and then it kind of, sometimes it goes by foot. That's why it says long run and short run. It's based on where the water main is. If it's in, if it was in the center of the street, we'd be paying the same, you know, but it's not. It's either on the left side or the right side of the road. So you have short runs and long runs. So you have short runs and long runs.
What you would be looking for is a motion to engage Waldorf, price not to exceed $50,000?
That is correct.
And you think that'll cover it?
Well, it's a start and then I'll be back in July to ask for another $50,000. My next budget year, so.
Check my budget.
But I mean, if we did this, we would really, really be in good shape.
Bringing that motion, Mindy?
Sure, yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve Waldorf excavating to complete the sewer liner placement in amount not to exceed $50,000.
Motion made by Councilmember Steffler, supported by President Pro Tem Dyke, to approve the water service replacement with Waldorf. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved.
Sorry, Kim.
She just don't like...
For the record. I am not against the mandate, I'm against the unfunded mandate.
She's right. Flint got money. I mean, they got bailed out.
Are they eligible?
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, something I have been complaining about for a very long time. Politicians come to us, they, "I'm going to take care of your people. Do local issues. I will address them." And as soon as they get the land saying, "Local? No, we're going to control it." And they pass laws that we don't have any controls anymore, but you have to pay for it. Thanks. Okay, so what are we on next? Uh, did it, oh, yeah. So page 87, wherever that is, okay. Okay. Eagle intent to apply for, and this is yours, manager Trent, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
In the short time that I've had the pleasure of serving as your manager, I've come to learn that there's two firms that we normally utilize for engineering services. Roe, that we've had a long-term relationship, as well as Spicer, because of the Almont Avenue project that had some controversy a year ago last summer. But in the process of, you know, my involvement with other communities and becoming aware of a firm called Flees and Vandenberg that did a lot of work with the Leoni wastewater treatment plant out in Jackson County, which Grass Lake sent their wastewater to that plant. So I became aware of the firm through that avenue. But, and because of a local sales guy that actually lived in Luddington, but periodically would come knocking on my door in Grass Lake, seeing if there was any opportunities. And so I crossed paths with two of these individuals at the MML conference last fall and got to learn a little bit more about their expertise regarding grants for small communities. And as time has gone on, that dialogue has continued. And just last week and even this morning, I had the opportunity to see firsthand the success that Flees and Vandenberg has had with obtaining large amounts of grant dollars and loan dollars through the USDA for small communities. And those are included in your package, just as an example. But I went out to visit the folks in Crosswell this morning because of the large number of amounts that's included in your packet, 14 million plus. Well, the latest and greatest number is that they've actually received an additional $20 million since that marketing flyer was put together. So here's a small city of about 3,000 people. And over the last five years, FNV, to use them as a short acronym, has had success in getting that client almost $40 million in grant dollars. How do they do that? What's their secret sauce? I had the chance to meet with the project manager that would be assigned to us if we move forward with utilizing their services to apply for this intent to apply. And I had kind of made up my mind about a month ago that as this deadline to do the intent to apply was coming up, that I would want to use FNV. And, you know, things have kind of come together here in short order where the project manager who works with these small communities has the inside track with the right people in high places. So he's able to call people on their cell phone. Whereas most people, you know, you try to call somebody in a state agency, they might be working from home, you know, it just goes to their voicemail. You might hear from them two weeks later. This guy has the cell phone numbers of all the right people in the right departments, is able to call them. He even talks to somebody from Eagle on Saturdays. And the guy takes his calls because he has that kind of long-term working relationship with these folks. And so a couple of things that I've learned about this firm and this individual is that they have drilled down information that no other consultant in my six years as a manager has ever been able to give me about what's the true median income for a village. We always get commingled in with the township, you know? So I've been to so many conferences where the USDA is making a presentation and you go up to the presenter afterward and you tell them where you're from. And they say, well, what's the zip code? And they throw the zip code in and they say, oh, you know, you're above the, you're above the median income for the state. So you don't qualify for any of these additional grant dollars. You can't even apply. And so this individual, because of his knowledge and knowing the right people and knowing the right access points to drill down in the US Census data, he actually sent me the link this morning that proves that the village of Almont, even though just a few months ago, people told me, "You're too high. You can't qualify." We are actually about $300 below the state median income level. And so what that means is that it opens up a world of opportunity for us to be able to get additional points for these types of grant programs going forward. And that was part of the reason why Crosswell had the success that they did because they were able to qualify at a certain level where they got 75% of the dollars as grant dollars. And so they only had to fund 25% with USDA at a ridiculously low interest rate. And now that, you know, time has gone by, they're at a slightly different level, but they're still considered a distressed community. They're just not getting as high a percent of grant dollars. So they have to fund a higher amount. But, you know, that's just one small element that I wanted to share with you that indicates to me that this firm has the right resources to help us be successful. It's not so much, you know, how good is David Trent? But you got to have the right engineering resources to help you get the monies. And FNV in my mind is the right tool at the right time to take advantage of all of these federal and state monies that are coming through the stream right now. And I had been told in a seminar that, you know, anybody that had applied in the past in the first round, that they're already queued up, they're ahead of the game. You're stuck behind them. You know, you can apply, and I had been told January 31st, they actually moved the date up. So the deadline now is November 1st to apply. And so this gentleman had the spreadsheet of everybody that's received money, their score. And it turns out that people that had applied, but if you didn't have enough points, you're out of the mix. It's not, you know, that you're stuck behind them. It's starting with a clean slate. And so that was another encouraging aspect too, that nobody else has been able to share with me. And the other critical element too, that they seem to be aware of, is that when you submit the information, they, because of these contacts that they have, basically do a pre-sale job before the application review process actually begins. They're already talking to the people in the right places to talk about, here's my project and what do you think? What should we do? So on and so forth. And Sam Moore, the LDC director, when he was the city manager at Crosswell, said that because of that connection that FNV had, they actually started to apply for a $20 million grant. And the person from Eagle called them up and said, "Don't apply right now. Break it up into two parts because we can get you $5 million without having to go through Uncle Sam and the state will approve that without any hiccups. And then once that's approved, apply for the bigger portion." And they were able to get the $20 million because of that direction and interface and connection that they had with the right people in high places. And so, you know, it's mind-boggling to see the kind of success that they had. And the city manager there today told me that out of the blue, three weeks ago, he got a phone call from the engineer from FNV saying, "There's an opportunity to apply for a million dollar grant because Macomb County Road Commission has excess monies that didn't get used for projects. And they don't want to give it back to Uncle Sam. They were federal monies." And so there's a three-week window to apply, but it has to be shovel-ready. Well, they, you know, part of their practice, after going through all of this grant success, is they always have shovel-ready projects in their hip pocket, ready to present. So they made an application and to the best of their knowledge, they were the only municipality to apply for that million dollar grant. How come all the other engineering firms in the world are not advising their clients about a million bucks? How come our good friends at Roe Engineers that we've been working with for years aren't calling me up and saying, "David, there's a million bucks on the table"? FNV has the resources, they're based in Grand Rapids. They started out as a two-man firm and now they have 250 engineers' offices throughout the state. And I think these are the right guys that we need to use in our boutique of experts, and utilize these folks to apply for an intent to apply. And I just want to caution you that because we're, just because we put in an ITA, doesn't mean that we're committed to going through with anything, you know? They're going to look at all of our CIP projects and the costs. They've already got our budgets. They're already doing the analysis to be able to submit a grant that would be the most comprehensive, that would get us, give us the biggest bang for the buck because that's part of their expertise too, is, you know, commingling different projects together so that, you know, you've got water and sewer going on at the same time. And, you know, and as this engineer said, you know, we help you big dream. Dream big. You know, we ask big, we dream big. And then if we find out that we need to reduce the scope of the project because of money, well, then we can do that. So we're not being committed to anything. But unless you have your hat in the ring, you can't get any money. So I'm coming to you tonight to ask for permission to utilize this firm, have them put in the ITA for us, and let's see what happens down the road. And the other thing, you know, we've asked Roe for some proposals on other projects like parking lot and municipal lot expectations. We have those proposals. To me, they're outrageously priced. This firm has said, "We will do this work for you." Because I called them back and I said, "Hey, you know, you're doing all this analysis for me. I appreciate that. How much does it cost to me? When will I see the bill?" You won't. We do this for free for our clients. The only time we pay you, or the only time we bill you is if you sign a contract for the scope of work contingent on us being able to get some grant money for you. He said, normally, you know, after they go through and they review the applications and decide who's going to get some point scoring, that there's a two-hour pre-application or post-application meeting. He said, "I won't even charge you for that." You know, he said, "I've done so many of those, it's, you know, we know what we're doing." You know, only when we throw a contract at you for a scope of services to complete the project that you've agreed on, will you start seeing any bills. To me, that's, that's big.
Customer service. I frequently say it's not necessarily what you know, it's who you know. Can make the difference. Welcome with I R O, in real life type thing. That's the actuality. If we were to approve this, is there any risk to the village?
Oh, because at the end of the day, as I shared with you, if they come back and say, hey, you know, Almont, you've been awarded $6 million for all of these projects that were submitted, we, you know, have to look at, well, how much of that is 75% funded? How much is half-funded? Now that we know we're, you know, a slightly distressed community because we're under the state average for median income, how much does that help us? You know, so those are all factors that come into play. And we can always reduce the scope of the project that meets whatever our future budget expectations are, what our debt load would need to be as far as increasing if need be to help us acquire these millions of dollars that could help us improve our infrastructure big time in a short period of time.
So we've been on council. As I can remember, we were never eligible for grants because the income was too high. It is? And yeah, here's the numbers and you're stuck with it. So no, you're not eligible. And now we hear this.
And it's because they were able to drive it down to...
So now is the time to try. Roe had an opportunity to approach us and sell us the same thing and didn't hear from them, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's amazing. Well, applause, David. Excellent. This looks great. Yeah, so we making that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve the intent to apply applications submitted by Flees and Vandenberg. I'm be up for the village for water and sewer projects that are identified in the village's CIP and may qualify for grant loan funding.
Support. Motion by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Alec, to approve the Eagle intent to apply for Flees and Vandenberg engineers. It's all good guys. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Unanimously approved. Regular agenda, item number 10, Eagle scrap tire grant. Oh, I see Roe.
Thank you for your support on the last motion. But by the same token, even though we've talked highly about FNV, there's still a place for our current engineers. And so Roe has been successful in getting some of their clients' dollars for scrap tire grants. And there's another opportunity that just came out here a couple of weeks ago where they announced the program and in trying to do some research to understand what's the secret buzzword this year? What is it that Eagle is interested in subsidizing? And last year, it turned out that they wanted to have county road commissions look at the technology of a rubber modified chip seal. And about 20 road commissions somehow all seem to be located on the west side of the state, got lots of money for chip sealing. So I reached out to a couple of those counties to find out, you know, how did you, how did you pull this off? Well, again, right people, talking to the right people at the right time. Eagle came out with a webinar a couple of weeks before the grant deadline. This one manager set his supervisor to, you know, it was a Zoom meeting, a webinar, and found out about their push for this modified chip seal program. And maybe all of the counties on the west side of the state heard about it and applied and, you know, they got the bulk of the money for this. And so it turns out, you know, the county that I chatted with, Oceana County, they actually do their own chip sealing. You know, some counties do that, some outsource it. They actually take care of the work for a nearby county as well for chip sealing. So they've got all of the equipment to do chip sealing. So why did you apply for the grant to do this, you know, scrap tire thing? Because they wanted to evaluate... Because they wanted to evaluate how effective that was compared to the regular chip seal. And because of the matching grant dollars, it made it cost-effective to at least examine that on several mile lanes within their county. And thus far, even though that, that job was just done this summer, they are highly impressed by the quality of the rubber-modified chip seal. They say it's thicker. The oil's thicker, so it gets into the cracks better. And they actually did it on a couple of roads that they thought really needed to be salvaged, where they really needed to be dug up, reconstructed, crushed, and all that good stuff. And at this initial stage, they think this chip seal has done an effective enough job of salvaging the roads that he thinks he can just go back next year with a one-inch cap and have the roads good for another 10 years, which is, you know, phenomenal when you look at, hey, you know, if I invest $50,000 to save a mile road, and it's going to cost me a quarter of a million or more to do a complete crush in shape and with a two-inch overlay, you know, you're saving lots of bucks long-term if this process is as, as effective as he's finding it to be at this early stage of the game. And so, I'm hoping that this year, Eagle is still of a frame of mind to support that chip seal project. And so, we looked at, you know, our streets, which ones, you know, are in fairly good condition, even if they have some fatigue and alligator cracks. Where could we use this? And I've identified South Bristol, along with the intersecting streets coming east off of M-53, partly because that's a thoroughfare for people to get to the park. That's a major use of our DPW equipment going up and down Bristol as well. And, and, and in, and in discussion with our friends at Row, they brought to light the fact that, you know, to try to estimate what the cost of this project would be for a small road project, you know, to mobilize and all that good stuff, you know, what, what our friends on the west side of the state saw on an average cost per mile could be significantly higher because you've got a small project. So, what I'd like to do here at the last minute is ask you for permission to add Church Street as well to the project. That's a street that I was considering last year for this type of program. And I think if we have both of those together, that it gives us enough footage to make it viable for a project for a contractor to come out and quote it. We know we're probably going to pay a higher cost than, you know, all of the lane miles that the folks on the west side of the state did. So, you know, we're estimating that it's probably going to cost $50,000 a lane mile to do this work. And so, we're going to probably, and it's going to require some number crunching, but I would say that we're not going to ask for more than $100,000, and out of our pocket would be the 50% match. I think it could be a lot less. You know, it might come in at $60,000, where we only have to pay 30. But if we can do a section of roadways for $30,000, I think it's worth the, the investment and the effort to, to apply and see what happens.
Many, many years, and the election coming up. It's all about roads. Fix the damn roads? Yeah. Sounds like a worthwhile project. Anybody here have any questions?
Row, as indicated in the motion, it would charge us a $1,500 fee to apply for things, so...
Yeah. And they have a deadline?
Yeah, have a deadline.
October 28th. She's with it. Now, it'd be great to hear a motion. Go ahead, Minnie, sorry.
Brian, I just wanted to ask you on those streets if that makes sense to you with what you're envisioning.
Structure's been redone in the past, and there shouldn't be any issues with re-digging it up or, like Church Street, it's kind of like a, it's pretty busy rolling through there. A lot of people go around. They don't want to drive through town. They go around that. And it's wide, too, so...
The other reason I selected Church was because, you know, the Bells is in full operation now. The, the whole facility is open, as well as it's next to the, the baseball field. So, you know, that gets a lot of traffic during the summertime with the baseball games, so...
Foolish people getting married and things like that. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a busy road, isn't it? But yeah, the ball fields, baseball, football. Lots, lots of cars, lots of traffic.
I'll make the motion to approve the application to be submitted to Row Professional Services by October 28th and behalf of the village to develop a rubber-modified chip seal project for South Bristol Street and the connecting streets east off of M-53, water, stone, Bates Alley, and Mill, and including Church Street, along with a 50% match requirement if awarded the grant for $1,500.
Motion made by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Calca, to approve the Eagle Scrap Tire Grant. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved. Now is the time for public comment for a non-agenda item. Sir? Sorry.
I have to say, I'm serving on a few boards myself. I've seen, been interested watching this all take place. Like, every citizen should have to do this. And thank you for the work you guys do, all right? I mean, you probably don't get to hear that, but it is the business, and sometimes it's boring and mind-numbing, but it's got to be done, right? Yep. So, not trying to curry favor for my issue as well. So, I just came to you. I've been trying to seek some resolution with, you know, the village and the ordinance officer. I live in the Drakeshire Farm subdivision over there. My wife and I built our house in 2017, took occupancy in 2018. We moved here from Dryden, been a member of LaPierre County for quite some time. The issue I'm having is I live in the back, I guess, northeast corner of the sub, and I have a camper. And I bring my camper. I store it over in a Dryden, in a storage facility. We camp quite often. If one thing came out of COVID that was positive is I get to work from home now. So, one of those benefits is my wife and I, having grandchildren and stuff now, we camp quite often. So, my camper is large. I have it in the driveway, and we keep getting cited for blocking the sidewalk, which, okay. So, now I put the camper in the road, and now I'm getting in trouble for having the camper in the road. I also have four children, all of driving age. If they come to my house and park in my driveway, I'm violating ordinance no matter what I do over there. And just so this council is aware, this entire community over here is full of young, upcoming families. They're going to have the same problems, and I've talked about this in our HOA meeting as well. So, straw-to-the-brook camelback for me is, you know, we purchased our camper. I had it in the driveway for just a day. Like I said, I do not store it on my property because things are just too freaking big to keep there. The rules of our HOA are 48 hours before the trip, 48 hours after, and we abide by those rules. I think the village actually has more relaxed rules than that. And we, we, we toe the line because we don't want the thing in our way either. So, I receive a warning letter about the camper being in the driveway. And I'm, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I blew it off because for four years now, I've been trying to seek resolution. I've called the ordinance officer. I've talked to people in the village clerk's office, and they made suggestions like, "Well, make your driveway longer." Well, I have to move my whole house. You know, I've been asked to make a variance for my property and add another driveway. You know, I'm not going to spend $5,000 to $10,000 to add a small driveway for me to use, you know, a couple of times a year. I mean, I just think this is a little... I mean, I, I try not to use the word harassment, but it started to feel that way because I just can't get anywhere with this. And we want to follow the rules. I'm not asking for any special exceptions. I'm just asking for a little understanding. I mean, we, we talked about the, the kids parking in the driveway. We got the suggestion of, "Well, there's a public parking lot a mile and a half away." So, I'm supposed to go shuttle my kids back and forth to my house and load my grandbabies up in the middle of the night? My kids come and visit me? I mean, I bought and paid for a driveway. Pay taxes on the driveway. You know, it, it's just really frustrating to me that we're taking the time to enforce an ordinance like this. I can see if I had the camper there, was obstructing things. There's a sidewalk directly across the street from us. I've talked to all of our neighbors. This isn't a neighbor complaint. This is just the officer coming through and writing me a citation now. So, I, I took the matter to court, hoping to just talk to a magistrate, again, come up with a resolution. They suggested that I come to a meeting, which I'm glad I did because I got to see some other workings. But they also, they, even the attorney, you know, he couldn't agree with me, but he agreed with me. Talked about the, the, you know, property variation, you know, but I really don't want to... I'm hoping I don't have to go through all those steps. But, and, or I'm just seeking some advice from you guys on what to do in this area. Because I think, you know, talking to several of the neighbors here, we love this community, but it's petty stuff like this that's driving us bananas. But I'm sure you guys deal with a lot of petty issues as well. So, i- it's a turn thing. And that's the only reason why I'm here raising my hand, is, like I said, I want to follow the rules. I, I mean, we're, you know, cars are in the road. If it's snowing, I'm going to move them out of the way. I mean, we're, we understand what has to be done. But my camper being in my driveway for the day, you know, and, and, and another thing of that, you know, they cited a safety rule to me. So, I'm like, "What about my safety?" Because now I have to load it and work in the street. If I got to do maintenance on it, I'm now laying in the road, you know, with, with cars driving by, where it could just be in my driveway for a day or two. And really, only inconvenience in me and not anybody else. Because I can count on one hand how many times I see somebody actually using the sidewalk in front of my house. So, that's my piece.
I can only speak for myself on that. I get three or four, five of them letters a year myself.
Uh-huh.
And I throw them in the garbage.
Yeah, yeah, well, mine resulted in...
When you pull that camper away and you put it in Dryden or wherever you store it, to me, that warning letter has just become taking care of it because you moved it.
Correct.
So, it's done.
Yeah, but I got a $50 ticket now.
I would fight the ticket.
But that's right. I'm here fighting the ticket, but I don't want to have to...
I've had the conversation with her and personally told her, "Send me the ticket."
Yeah.
Because I'd love to challenge it in court.
I got it right here, and I took it to court. And, you know, the first thing they're making me do is come back, talk to you guys. And that's why I'm here. Because she works for you. Because her direct... Because I've actually tried to talk to her directly. She's never returned my phone calls. But she did call in to the attorney that was assigned to this case, which is a waste of your guys' money as well, in my opinion. And we were able to talk over the phone, and she just basically blatantly told me. She goes, "Well, I don't make the rules. I only enforce them. I have to take it up with you guys here." And as just a citizen and not causing any problems over here, like I said, if I was storing it there, if my yard was in disarray, if all hell was breaking loose over there, yeah, you got me. And even, even the attorney said, you know, "Ordnances are there for when you guys need them the most." But to me, it's kind of ridiculous going to the extreme in this neighborhood to, you know, if there was a problem with one of the neighbors, I, I get it. I get it. But even she admitted on the phone and said, "No, it's just me driving through, and I seen it." And I seen it two days, I, you know, the day before we went on a trip and the day we brought it back. And then she mentioned that I'm now parking it in the street, and she has a problem with that now. So, I got to run cords and stuff over this sidewalk now, so no matter what, I'm going to be violating an ordinance somewhere.
You're at 5297 Brookshire?
Uh, no, I'm at 7871 Yorkshire Drive, right in the, right in the corner, right by the infamous Stoop Drain.
Oh, does it, so, does the street dead-end there into the...
Uh, no, nope. It's the street right before that. Up a ways, we're right on the corner there. So, I've been kind of parking it, nuzzling it over into that little corner area. My neighbor, we allow his son to park in front of our house because she's been getting on to him about him blocking the sidewalk there, too. So, if my camper is there, by chance, he can't park in front of my house because I, it's a big camper. I'm not going to lie. It's, it's big, and it takes up a lot of room. They won't deliver my mail because it's in the way. So, I don't know what to do at this point, but I don't want to have to fight a ticket every time, and I'm just at my wits' end. So, that's why I come to, for, for you kind of people, to find out something to do here.
Somebody, somebody, yeah. Somebody, his camper...
Has it marked as closed?
...into the sidewalk, and...
I just find it humorous that we're going to, we're going to harp about a camper that's there for a day or two, and we got places that have been on that same sheet he's looking at for a year that she won't enforce.
Yeah, that, that's my problem with it.
To me, I think it's a mute matter. If we have the power to tell them to throw the ticket away, I think we tell them to throw the ticket away. The guy's there for one or two days before his trip and after his trip.
Because the HOA rule is 48 hours for, 48 hours after. And, and honestly, we, we are really strict about that, cause again, we don't want it there. The only time I've had it there in, you know, ever pushed the envelope is if we have a back-to-back trip or I'm not gonna take it to storage for a day to go right back and get it.
Sure.
You know, and then I've always contacted even the, the president over there and I've even told the officer, I'll call you and say, hey, this is my plan, if, if that's cool, you know? And we've been making it work in the road, but now if I'm gonna get a ticket for being in the road too, what else am I supposed to do? I can't use my stuff. So, the, and again, that's why I'm here.
Well, I think it might be, the problem is we can't just tell people they don't have to follow the rules. You know, we have that in place to keep sidewalks clear, which is also a public safety thing, you know, we-
Right.
I don't-
It's a huge gray area.
I, I can't tell you that you can park and block the sidewalk, but tell other people they can't. So that, that's what I struggle with here is that it's one of those-
I struggle with that, she wrote him a ticket, but down on Bristol, South Bristol Street, we've got a scrap herd going that she doesn't keep pushing.
Yeah, when-
Write the ticket.
That's a separate issue, you know, just talking about blocking sidewalk, just-
But he moves it, so to me, that warrants, if it's not there, after she writes the warning letter, he's took care of the warning letter.
Right. In, in the likelihood, I mean, I, I'm, we, we did 15 trips this year. So if she drove back by there, I don't know how, when, what her route is, and honestly, I've never even seen her, I just get the picture. Uh, there's a chance she sees it back there in the driveway and that's just not the case. We, 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 we come and go with it all year long, I don't store it on the property. Um, and, and again, and I, I know we're tied by the rules. I'm, I'm a manager myself and we gotta go by policy and again, I'm not asking for special treatment. Uh, I'm just asking for what, what are my avenues here? Because no matter what I'm gonna do, I'm going to be blocking this sidewalk. Either my kids, cords from this camper, or the camper. I mean, I have no problem leaving it in the street, but if I'm gonna get a ticket for it being in the street too, you know, my hands are getting really tied here and that's what's really frustrating me about it.
Something there, or maybe there's a way that you can communicate with her and-
I'm supposed to go-
Say, hey, I give you a warning, you know?
I, I'm supposed to go back to court over this, over the 21st. They gave me, they extended it till then for me to seek resolution with you guys.
Mr. President, if I may be so bold, uh, this gentleman has indicated he's called the office a number of times and he's talked to maybe, you know, Pam or Lisa and so on, but he's never talked to me.
No, I have not.
And what I would like to propose is that, uh, this gentleman and I get together and have a chit chat and, uh, maybe we coordinate a meeting with Ms. Riddle and, uh, uh, get a better understanding of the usage of his camper, uh, if it's stored during the winter time, uh, in Dryden, which I assume would be coming up shortly. So in the very near future, it's gonna be a non-issue anyway. And, uh, and if he's willing to contact us periodically to say, hey, uh, I'm, 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 I'm tying up the driveway for the next four days and then I'll be gone and done, so on and so forth. Uh, the, that, that's the kind of information that we do appreciate because we do have some folks that do call us up and say, hey, I've got a vehicle that's, you know, in need of repair and it's stuck here and it'll be gone in four days. And, and you know, if we know that, then we know it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be taken care of and we don't need to bother ticketing somebody for an issue that's gonna be resolved two days later, so.
And, and that, that's the, the level of understanding I'm seeking and I appreciate that offer, so.
So instead of tying up Ms. Riddle and this council with this minor concern, if you will, uh, let the village manager handle this.
Appreciate that, thank you, appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that as well, sir.
Proposal, yep. Sit down and talk and-
And if you don't mind, I have one more question about Stoop Drain as well.
Good luck.
Are they completely finished with it?
Oh, we don't want that one.
Where I live, right behind me, they, the, the finished grade of, of the drain back there, it's like they, they got to my neighbor's house and then just stopped and then all the equipment vanished. And it was our understanding that they were supposed to, I have a big berm that runs along the back of the property there, that they were supposed to finish tapering that berm and plant seed and just everything disappeared after that.
Drain commissioner was here last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said the job is, the, the, the project's completed.
It's, it's completed, okay. Yeah, so I mean, in, in my mind, they, they kinda stopped a little short. It's not that big a deal to me, I was just wondering, are they coming back? I mean, cause again, it just didn't look finished and they disappeared.
I would bet, no.
The bare soil?
Uh, yeah, it's bare soil that, I mean, it, it was a pretty steep berm. They, they dug, uh, you know, dug the new ditch through that area, they ran two, up to the, the one edge of our property and then it's just open ditch after that going into the new underground, um, pond. Uh, but they never finished seeding, never finished grading, they just vanished, so.
The recourse is to approach the drain commission with that. Um, if erosion is an issue, you can make a complaint to Eagle.
Okay, and, and I haven't seen anything like that, I was just wondering, okay, is there machines gonna be coming back? Cause you know, they, they caused quite the ruckus back there. And, and the only other thing I wanna point out to you guys as well is there now that they've done that, uh, expansion through there and moved all the fences and sheds and home, you know, it's become a super highway for snowmobiles, um, through the winter time. Um, I've had to run several of them off as well, so I, just preparing you guys for more complaints. Uh, I've, I've talked to several folks, I'm like, yeah, this is, you know, a freeway now, but, uh, you, you may be hearing about it more. So whether they listen to me or not, but we, we caught them several times zipping through there. I mean, it's one thing after the other and again, I, I appreciate you guys' time, I know it's- Well, I appreciate you guys' time and I appreciate your offer, sir, I will reach out to you. Yeah, thank you. And again, appreciate you guys' work and it's late and- Two.
Thank you. What's your name, sir?
Uh, my name is Ed Kuliowski.
Ed Kuliowski.
K U L I G O.
Thanks for coming, thanks for your patience. Okay, uh, so we did that. And so here is our ordinance number 208, engine breaking ordinance. And so with the memorandum and here's the draft of an ordinance by our village attorney. Anybody have issues with the-
My only question is, where does, where does the fine money go? Who collects it and where is it? Does it go to the county? Does it come to us?
To the DDA.
Andy must've worked on this one.
Directly to the chairman, he deserves it. I, I, I think it goes to, um, it goes into the court, court's fund. Civil, civil infractions, doesn't it go directly?
It's going to our general fund, or?
Yeah, they go into our general fund.
What?
They go into our general fund.
Oh, okay, there you go.
It's a civil infraction.
Right.
That's a good question. Is this a new ordinance?
Yes.
Being proposed.
It's gonna get posted, okay, but I can tell you with my office right here, I, it shakes the DVD on my wall every time they come through. And I don't have front jake breaks, I do, I have it in the process.
No, it's-
It's, it gets locked.
You're in a bad spot because they're hammering into that curve.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's, when we discuss this, that's where I had said, we need to put a zone from where to where to make this. And to me, that curve needs to be allowed to have it, cause they're coming from the fat, at least heading south. Now, when they're going north into that, they shouldn't be at-
It's not, it's all south.
Yeah.
I hear it, I, you get numb to it, but it does shake.
Oh, yeah.
Slow down.
Yeah, but you know what, just the other day, I was standing at the four corner waiting for the light to change and this gravel train, he threw it on just to throw it on.
Right.
There was no, there was no need for him to do it, he was right in front of chickies, the light had just turned green, he was, could've accelerated, but no, he threw that thing on and that-
Well, a lot of them-
Reverberation between all the buildings and the glasses, like-
And I'm gonna bet he didn't throw the switch for it, a lot of trucks, like all of my trucks, it's either on or it's off.
Yeah, it's automatic.
And when you let your foot up on the fuel, she'll sing a song. And that's, when you get between, I've done it, I'm telling you, I've done it on my bike and I've done it in a semi. You get between the buildings and it's quiet and you let your foot up, you can hear it echo right off the glass of everybody's buildings.
Yeah, and it was loud.
You know, whether it's right or it's wrong, I mean, I can only tell you that's 90% of it. Is there times they're using it, they need it, I'm gonna say yes.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I mean, I'd hate to, to see somebody rolling hard into that stop, into the light and it turns red cause they thought they were gonna make it and not use it and blow the light and kill somebody on the other side.
Right now, they just go through the light.
They just blow the light, they, they, they do that on a daily occurrence.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's cause they're just misjudging their commitment to the light.
Yeah, well, I like, I like this process that's laid out here, that we're taking more of an educational approach.
Sure.
And of like, not, non-emergency, we don't want you to do it.
And send letters out to all the local places.
Yeah.
Maybe send some letters to the factories that are here to have them post it in their shipping areas. Um, I would hit some of the trucking companies in Romeo, I mean, there's only a couple of big ones there. Just cause they're the big ones traveling through here on a daily basis.
And when we previously discussed this, there was a question of, um, what kind of challenge, uh, would be faced, um, for the village in presenting this to a court. Um, and this is, the officer has to observe it, has to be right there so he can say, yeah, you don't have to do decimal levels, all that stuff. Yeah, it was right there and so you can tell some lawyer prepared this, it was the intelligent thing to do. So it, it could fly in court.
Yeah.
I think it looks good.
I'm happy with it.
Yeah, so thi- this is for discussion and, um, so it can be our next agenda. If for first reading, yeah.
This complies with the MDOT rulings for signage, where we're not allowed to put a sign up. Uh, we did confirm with one community in Lapeer County that does have a sign and we discovered, Chief Martin did the research on this and found out that MDOT, uh, basically turned over a section of M21 to the local township and thereby they were able to put a sign up that says, no engine braking or jake braking or whatever the sign says, so.
But it's not on 53.
No, yeah, right, it's not on 53.
53 is a main truck corridor for 69.
Yeah, so, um, but anyway, you know, as, as you indicated, Councilmember Steffler, this is more of an educational approach and, and, uh, Chief Martin said, you know, if, uh, if they're not on our list, uh, we'll just warn them and then we can add them to our list and, uh, they can be cited in the future if we have to pull them over, so.
Hate to advertise in that, Charlie Brown's, warning everybody coming into town.
That's an interest.
I'll pay for it.
Won't take most.
Maybe Andy will.
You know they see that sign.
Funny when I'm on the zoom with a, with a client, they're like, what is that noise? I'm like, don't stop me. Isn't that a good sense of honor, I'm just putting, happy birthday Jake.
You know. Okay, uh, so we actually finished with our agenda, believe it or not, it's midnight, so we're doing well.
We kick off.
Yeah, yeah, um, I think I probably were running high for MDP, if you're earning longer. Uh, anything to bring to council, Andrew Trent?
Uh, no, other than the, the very brief report I put on your table, except for two of you, because the printer ran out of paper. Uh, we've got a printer problem with our big, big machine, uh, that's gonna be out of commission for a couple of days, waiting for a part. Uh, and yesterday, you might've heard that, uh, we, as well as many other people that are tied in with the ISD, uh, lost, uh, internet and phones for a good part of the day, came back on after 3:30 yesterday.
Have to fix the 60 feet of fibular optic cable.
Don't believe so, otherwise I think it would've been out for a lot longer.
Yeah, I thought maybe get a shovel out.
I was at a conference last week, uh, again, walk away with a, a few golden nuggets, some of them more related to the planning commission, so there'll be some interesting discussion going forward on some of the topics that, uh, Caitlin Haban and I will be bringing to the table. She was at the conference as well last week, um, representing Rome.
So.
Sir.
Wayne?
Um, just real quick, um, really just on Andy, I mean, I know obviously I've really said much on my end, but I think even for the council, maybe he doesn't know him that well. Um, I've known his family for years and, um, they have a lot of integrity and I think he probably does more than he should, as far as like gets himself burned out. Um, so again, I just wanted to kinda, you know, put that out there, I think, you know, he's a ve- very valuable asset to the DDA. I think we'll see a lot of improvements with him, kind of stepping up and taking over this and trying to find a new director. Um, and I think really he's got that focus on, you know, we need to refocus on what we're really doing. It's not the, the drama, it's really the focus is on Elmont, what's Elmont represent and stand for? And put all the rest of the stuff aside, I think, you know, that's what people are kinda missing, I think. Yep, you know, kinda step back, so.
Yeah, thanks, Wayne.
Yep, appreciate it.
Pete?
Um, I just wanna echo the other comments, I waited till now, but, uh, appreciate the more detailed wastewater treatment and, uh, DPW reports, I know that we've been picking on you, I specifically said something the last time. Um, I appreciate it, I like the detail, I liked how you had it broke out. Same with, uh, Chief Martin and, uh, what his officers are doing, getting that additional training. And if, if there's any grants or anything that we can get, uh, our law enforcement folks, that would be great. Um, quick question about parking lots, our favorite topic, our second favorite topic. Who is responsible for the parking lots between KBB and Gas Becker? And that go around behind US Postal Service or Post Office and out to, next to the bakery? Is that, are those privately owned or, cause it's kind of-
The DDA one starts next to the church lot, isn't it, and stops before it turns and goes behind?
If you want, I'll send you off the map, we use our snow phone that has it dialed in. Um, we have a slipper in that direction, but I, if I recall, it is not that whole-
That's what I thought, it's only like-
Yeah.
A handful of parking spots, that's it.
To that point, at least it'll go and say, no, it's not DDA, but I think it's, I think it's Gas Becker's.
I'd say it's split between Gas Becker and Cracker Barrel, is how I always thought.
Yeah, well, the part behind Gas Becker into the US Postal Service, whoever's gonna plow that this year, better plan on getting new, uh, cutting blades for underneath their plow, cause when they hit the, the two potholes that are back there that hide underneath the ice and water, uh, they're gonna be surprised, cause they're a good six, eight inches deep.
I recall correctly, this goes back a number of years, DDA licensed Cracker Barrel, not, not Becker's, obviously. And of course, he had bumpers up, so it was kind of trapped in. Um, and, and DDA agreed to maintain, I think Stripe, near where Cracker Barrel is. Um, and I'm thinking that, that didn't get renewed. The DDA goes, the, um, yeah, yeah, the, the driveway going on into Bristol, yeah.
We both, yeah, we have the top quarters.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's why they got resurfacing Stripe.
I'll take a look at everything I'm digging through.
Okay.
Find the old recent updated map that's about all these DDA lots and then from there we can go with that who's, uh-
And, and the idea, I mean, DDA got involved, cause they wanted the public parking. And so there were license agreements, probably have expired by now.
You got a couple of Cracker Barrel or the one with-
Uh, yeah, Cr- uh, Cracker Barrel, um, Raiders was not there at the time. Um, Lippman's old building was, yeah, yeah.
Get you that after that.
Yeah, we can maybe update and see, yeah, what if anything we wanna do.
The only thing I wanted to bring up, because I know that's, it's gonna be in rough shape here coming on winter.
Medical building, I mean, the theater, there's holes, yeah, bad shape. And DDA was supposed to maintain that, didn't happen. But new executive, uh, new executive director, new chairperson, who knows? Anything can happen. Tim?
Brian, according to social media, people are wondering when your $250,000 insurance is up.
Just went by the house yesterday and again today.
Yep, we, uh, pulled our first load or made our first lap around the village yesterday. Um, I got, it was very productive, only two guys went out. Um, we dumped, we dumped that Weaselgon's, uh, I actually sent some pictures to the office today, put on Facebook for some educational and the dates and let them know that we're starting. I, I do believe the leaves are falling a couple of weeks earlier than normal, which is good, that's what you want, so. But, uh, yeah, we're excited, but it seems to, so far, so good. I mean, it, it's everything that we were told it was gonna be, so. But, yeah, we're picking them up now, so tell your neighbors, get them out.
I just, a couple of quick things, um, I had been talking with Brian and David about the handicap spot behind for the doctors of therapy. I think we've come to an agreement for just converting one of the spots right next to the dumpster there. For now, as a quick fix, um, while Rome is working on whatever they're doing. Um, the other one is with Andy picking up a lot of this time and trying to sort through things, is there any way we can give him a key so he can get in here instead of struggling to jump when it's open or not open? I mean, it was just something, I, when you had said that earlier today, you forgot Friday, no one's here. It just, I mean, to help work with his schedule, since he is picking up so much more, I don't-
Should be a problem, I quite frankly, I didn't, I mean, there's a secret code and I didn't know if I was allowed to give it out.
Oh, and I said that to him.
It's secret.
Okay, okay, Kim. How about a key though, is there a problem?
A key is, a key is preferred, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I just, that way it'll make it, you can do things that fits your schedule a little better and- No.
That makes perfect sense, good, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Jim.
Other than that, that's it?
That special meeting, I had to run him to let everybody in. It's all because of the code, which is 18364723, I think. Uh, kidding, Jackie.
I just wanna remind everybody that, um, the Elmont Lions is putting on the 25th annual anniversary of the Spooky Time Bash on October 29th at 12 o'clock. And I know the whole village is doing all different things, aren't they?
Yes, and that was, uh, it was great, you know, working together on that from that Lions movie there.
Yes, yes, thank you for coming to that.
So, but yeah, so, yeah, there's a lot of businesses now stepping up, being a part of it. Trick or Treat downtown is still gonna continue, but this is just another extra that a few of the businesses are, are tracking it on. So, um, now that I have access to the Facebook, Holly's gonna be doing that for us, we're gonna get, you're gonna see more activity on the, the DDA page reporting a lot of that stuff. And we're gonna get flyers out for holidays and that.
In this Spooky Time Bash, that is something that, um, they don't charge for, um, but sometimes the local businesses will give us candy and things like that to hand out or financial donations. Um, but it's a great event for the community. I'm all done. I think it's 12 to 3, um, and then yours starts at 1 o'clock, is it 1?
Those are running independently.
Okay.
Sally, with everything going on, it should, it should've been DDA driven, but some of the businesses got, took out their-
Sure.
This year, next year, we're gonna have a set time, but I think one of them started there at 1 and they'll start at 2. And it's the Spooky Time- there, that 1, and one of them started at 2, and it's the four quickly expected to happen.
Okay.
Um, very, uh, interesting meeting, um, dealt with tough topics, um, it's been a long time here, unfortunately. I, I did want to get the council to know Andy a bit, so that it's a feel for it. Um, thank you for letting that happen, and, um, Tim, if you can reassure board members to contact you upon concern, uh, I am very confident that, uh, their seats are safe. Nobody is getting, being excluded or kicked off that board.
Like I said, I don't like, I don't like hearing any hearsay, and a lot of what went down over the last two weeks was secondhand information, but that, when I was speaking, somebody contacted me directly after they were, I ran the last meeting, so...
Yeah.
I, I thought I was bringing up publicly, so that turns out they're knowing. Sadly, all that hearsay was going wrong about me, but I behaved in this profession and I trusted each other, right? So, I, I mean, to that point, we have a procedure the other way, right?
Right. It, 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 in the, in the point, Andy, anything, any, any comments I've made in the last couple of public meetings was not directed personally to anybody, it was just concerns of what I was hearing, and, so, when we go forward, like we talked about tonight, that better processes are put in place, so, the drum and politics stop, and reality happens.
You're fine, I got a raise to get, no, and I could accept that you was, you attacked some private, maybe that was not true for the whole. So, other than that, the rest of it, I can carry on some hope, but...
Well, it's Andy, Andy indicated one of his memorandums, uh, "We have to deal with the good, bad, and the ugly, and sometimes it gets ugly, but we handle it, we manage it, and we have the right attitude, despite everything, whether it's in the village or globally, remain optimistic, that's the only way that things will get better, so..."
Are you ready?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I have really high hopes, I think that, that things are gonna be great. We're adjourned.